For the January 13th City Council, City of Palo Alto, can the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Berman.
Here.
Councilmember Burt.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Council, Vice Mayor Niss.
Here.
Councilmember Price. Councilmember Sharp.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Mayor Shepherd.
Here.
Aide present.
Thank you. And we're opening up the, our first agenda item is closed session, Conference with Labor Negotiators. And we do have public comment on this, so I will be asking the, and we just have six comments at this point, so we're going to hold to our three-minute rule. So the Vice Mayor will call out two at a time, and if you can come up and speak on this agenda item. Item number one is Conference with Labor Negotiators.
So two names, but one person at a time?
One person at a time, but, yes, that's right, thank you. So the first person to speak will be Margaret Atkins, to be followed by Pete Curros. Right, and I just, and since this is the public forum here, we do have in our policy and procedures no public outburst of clapping and that type of thing, so that we do have a good common ground for everybody to speak in the democratic forum. Thank you. Margaret.
Good evening, Mayor Shepherd and councilmembers, and congratulations.
Thank you.
So my name is Margaret Atkins, and I am the SEIU Palo Alto Chapter Chair. I've worked for the city for over 18 years, and I don't ever recall Palo Alto having the attraction and retention crisis that has been plagued with since 2010. The ability to retain and attract our skilled and experienced employees arose out of the economic crisis, and although the city is recovering, we are and will continue to have difficulty attracting and retaining experienced and skilled employees if we don't achieve a solution now. Palo Alto is allowing the competition to steal our valuable resources. When the competition entices our skilled employees away, they are stealing time and money from Palo Alto, the time and money that Palo Alto invests in training in their employees. We tried to address this issue during the 2012 negotiations. SEIU proposed longevity pay, and Palo Alto's response was to force new employees to sign an agreement that essentially binds them to Palo Alto and forces them to reimburse Palo Alto for their training costs. It was a punitive approach to keep new workers here rather than an incentive to retain experienced employees. We are now at the negotiation table again, and we are facing the same issues at the table that we faced in 2012. We have made several proposals, all of which were rejected. In our proposals, we have offered flat-rate medical, we've offered to pay for unfunded liability related to retiree healthcare costs, and we've offered longer and alternative vesting schedules. In return, we ask that employees are allowed retirement with dignity, basic cost of living adjustments, greater accountability when it comes to contracting out city services, and bringing us comparable with the competition. We want to work with the city, but the city has not been flexible. We have only received one package proposal two and a half months ago. There has been no compromise. However, what the city's negotiation team did do is to declare impasse. This negotiation is not about the employees only. It is about the public safety and maintaining the high quality of services that the residents of Palo Alto deserve. The employees are committed to putting the community first. Will the city make that same commitment by retaining our skilled and experienced employees? We respectfully request that council direct the current, the city's current negotiation team back to the table so we can work on solutions together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Pete, again, no clapping or other outward gestures. Okay, next speaker is Pete Curros, to be followed by Lane Pianta.
Hello, my name is Peter Curros, and I'm a gas system technician in the utilities department. I'm also a part of the bargaining team between the city and us workers. I'm here to let you know that we are losing a lot of talent in the utilities department and throughout Palo Alto. Many of our best and brightest workers have left. To speaking specifically in the gas department, we're losing these workers specifically to PG&E. What happens is, we're forced into hiring people with no utility background. They get trained, and then they go on, they, they, they go to PG&E. And this is an issue. One, it's compromising the citizens of Palo Alto. We're constantly moving employees in and out. Now we're training new people, and the safety of delivering gas to someone's home is big. We don't want San Bruno, we don't want explosions, we want to provide a safe service. Not only that, it's compromising myself as a worker to be working with people without this type of background. Now, the reason why this is happening is just, we cannot compete with PG&E anymore. We should be pulling people from PG&E over here, or other gas industries, but we, we just cannot. So I'm here to express to you all that I hope you no longer neglect the gas department, no longer neglect utilities, because not only should Palo Alto be about technology, about real estate, or about nice trees, it should be about the best city workers possible, providing the best possible service to our citizens. So I really hope that we could get back to the table to discuss issues in my specific department and for the rest of the city. So I really hope we could get past, impasse, and start fixing this together. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lane Pianta, followed by Jesse Cruz.
Good evening. My name is Lane Pianta, and it's my honor to serve as production manager for the Palo Alto Children's Theater. As you weigh the difficult decisions you have to make, I ask you to put the people in our community first, and in particular, to think about the cultural, culture of excellence that you would like to transmit to your children. As many of you know, the Palo Alto Children's Theater is the oldest municipally-run children's theater in the United States of America, an institution that the citizens of Palo Alto have maintained as a priority for over 80 years. Serving approximately 1,500 child participants and over 25,000 patrons each year, we are experiencing our most successful seasons on record. My sincere thanks and appreciation goes to those of you on the city council who have supported us and helped the children's theater to become the one-of-a-kind learning institution that it is today. All of the success that we've enjoyed in recent years has been accomplished in spite of ongoing challenges related to understaffing. We have only six full-time positions at our theater, and now with the departure of our long-serving costume designer, who is retiring after 35 years of excellent service, we will be down to only five. As the city considers what to do next, I urge the city council to continue its full support of the children's theater and the many citizens we serve by retaining that full-time position and not replacing it with contract labor. Please do not flag in your support of this historic institution. Please do not place us in the untenable position of always doing more with less. Please do not ask professionals in the arts to work without benefits or the security of a decent standard of living. Please do not make it more difficult for us to hire and retain the talented and capable individuals that we need by eliminating a middle-class position and replacing it with a starving artist position. Please maintain the excellence of product that is enjoyed by everyone who attends our productions. Please maintain the high standards that have stood the children's theater in such good stead for over eight decades. Please maintain the accountability that is crucial to preserving the safety and security of the hundreds of children who participate in our program. Please remember the commitment that the citizens of Palo Alto have made for over 80 years and provide your full support to this noble institution. I hope with all of my heart that less than two decades from now, in the year 2032, at the centennial anniversary of the Palo Alto Children's Theater, I may stand before you again and speak with praise of the investment that you've made in the lives and well-being of the children of this great city. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesse Cruz, followed by Primo Nielsen.
Hello, and good evening. My name is Jesse Cruz. I am the last electric system operator for the City of Palo Alto Utilities. There used to be six of us, and now it's only me. We have lost four of our electric system operators to the City of Santa Clara, three within the last six months, due to wage difference between two cities. To tell you a little bit of what I do, if there's a power outage in your neighborhood, I am the guy that tries to restore your power ASAP. Since the city is not paying competitive wages, we are unable to attract new talent as our salaries are below this industry standard. And we live in a very expensive area where the cost of living is a lot more. In the end, it's the public who suffers. When your electric grid depends on a single operator, response times suffers. We are unable, or me, I am unable to react quickly to emergencies. And the public and the residents of Palo Alto does not get the level of service that they deserve. There is no one to check the switch program that I write, and a single mistake could cause an accidental loss of power, or a damage to inexpensive electrical equipment, or, not to mention, loss of productivity and comfort for our residents. Seriously, it could be fatal. And that is what we are trying to avoid. Thank you.
Thank you. Primo Nielsen, followed by Aaron Milke.
How you doing? My name's Nelson Primo, electric crew lead for the City of Palo Alto. I've been in the utility industry for approximately 27 years. During that time, I've been a meter reader, groundman apprentice, lineman, foreman, general foreman, supervisor. At 27 years, I've never worked in such a small workforce as I have here. When I got hired on four years ago, we had 20 guys, we're down to 10. Six of them went to jobs that are paying more in the area. PG&E was mentioned, but also Santa Clara and TID. Three of them retired once the last contract got imposed, to try not to lose money in their retirement. So they retired earlier than they wanted to. We've also hired three people in the last, what, three years, and all three of them have quit, going to those other places as well. So, really, so that's a total of nine people that have left just for the money, and then three for the retirement. So the reason, the only reason these people left, and the only reason we're not getting more people coming in, is the rate of pay. Right now, we're about 20% behind PG&E, about 15% behind Santa Clara, and around 5% behind Turlock, the utility district. You know, Jesse, Jesse mentioned the outage times for the residents, and something else to think about is some of the big players commercially that are here in Palo Alto, Hewlett-Packard, Varian, a lot of these places won't tolerate long outages. In my experience in 27 years, where the outages really get extended is during a catastrophe of some sort. Earthquake in '89, the storms that were in '95, '05, all these put a lot of people out for a long period of time. I don't know how long somebody like Hewlett-Packard or Varian would tolerate being out. The outage times and the restoration times are based solely on experience, which we're severely lacking at this point, and also the amount of people you can put out there. Something else to consider is, we have people that are going to retire. I know of three right off the hand, so that brings us down to six people covering the City of Palo Alto. So, appreciate your time.
Thank you. And our last speaker will be Aaron Miller.
My name's Aaron Miller. I've worked for the City of Palo Alto for 10 years as an operator, operating your wastewater treatment plant, and I've spent the last 12 years repairing the equipment in the wastewater treatment plant. You know, the city has, the operators and mechanics designated as essential workers. The water quality control plant is a 24-hour operation. We clean the wastewater that goes to the bay. We keep your streets from backing up with sewage, which you know is a huge health and safety hazard. The voters and residents of Palo Alto want a working sewage treatment plant, but the truth is that the city is not paying competitive wage for the skilled workers. I believe a hiring and retention crisis is happening. See, the people who have the skills to perform the work that we do at the water quality control plant make 21% below here in Palo Alto what our neighboring agencies are making. We're getting serious job offers that take our skills and experience elsewhere, and two out of my six coworkers were offered jobs just recently, $10 per hour more elsewhere. And I work a second job since the last four years have gone by, and we've had pretty bad contracts. And Palo Alto cannot keep its skilled workers and won't be able to attract qualified people the, the way things are going. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll retire into closed session. We intend to be back out here by 7:30. If not, we will, we might come out and make a notice announcement.
We have two items on the closed session tonight.
Yes, can...
So one is Conference with...
Do I need to read these?
Just, the clerk, can we read them? Yes.
Just so the public's aware.
Usually, I just say what the subject matter is. We've already talked about the one on the labor. The second one is on the legal counsel, potential litigation, Mitchell Park Library and Community Center.
Portable action. And we move right into the special order of the days, of the day, which is the appointment of three positions to the storm drain oversight committee for three-year terms, and we have ballots up here. Do you want me to announce the names, or we don't need to? Okay. While we're voting for this, I'm going to move into amendment changes, additions, and deletions, which we do not have any tonight, and then city manager comments.
Were there already, Madam Mayor?
We are at city manager's comments.
Thank you. Wow, great. So I did want to announce or re-announce that there will be a, the San Fresquito, San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority and the Santa Clara Valley Water District will be jointly hosting a community meeting regarding the Pope Chaucer Street Bridge Replacement Project on Wednesday, January 15th, that's this week, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. at the East Palo Alto Academy, which is located at 475 Pope Street in Menlo Park. At that meeting, the project design team will present two conceptual design alternatives to the community, both of which would replace the existing bridge with a new structure that will allow for passage of a 100-year flood. Following the presentation, there will be an open house during which attendees can engage project staff and consultants and provide feedback and answer questions. So that's this Wednesday, January 15th, at 6:30 p.m. I know a number of members in our community are particularly interested in that project. The fire department co-sponsors the Spot the Box campaign. Community members are invited to participate in the Racing Hearts Foundation Spot the Box campaign, and the goal is to locate and provide GPS coordinates of automatic external defibrillators in the community. The information will be entered into banners and been placed, will be placed throughout the community. Go to www.racinghearts.net/spotthebox for more information. Actually, go to the iPhone store, Apple Store, whatever, download an app for it to be able to compete. By the way, I already have sent in the picture of the AED that's in the city manager's and the clerk's and councilmember's office area. As you are aware, a tragic double fatality fire occurred Friday evening in the 900 block of Embarcadero Road. The fire burned quickly due to the large amount of combustibles that were stored in the home. In the 1,300-square-foot home was 50% involved with the fire at the arrival of the first fire engine, four minutes after dispatch, as you know, Station 3 is just down the street. Crews quickly entered the home, found one deceased person in the living room, one deceased person in the kitchen. The fire was brought under control in approximately 10 minutes, and the scene was secured for the respectful removal of the deceased, and a thorough investigation began, which lasted throughout the weekend. The fire chief reports that a unified response from Palo Alto Fire, the Police Department, Utilities, and Public Works supported our response to this tragic incident. The Santa Clara County Fire Investigation Task Force involve many members from, involve members from many county fire departments and law enforcement agencies. The task force is used in cases like this where experts in scene management, fire cause determination, fire behavior, and incident documentation support our own local efforts. The origin of the fire is known to be in the kitchen, and the cause is still being investigated, but it has been determined to be accidental. Then lastly, it gives us a great pleasure to notify you that our own Palo Alto Junior Museum and Zoo has been selected to receive a 2014 State Superintendent's Award for Excellence in Museum Education for the School Science Program. These awards for excellence in museum education is a joint project between the California Association of Museums and the Office of the State Superintendent of Public Instruction. Each year, more than 16,000 children take part in the Junior Museum and Zoo's programs, which include preschool and family class, summer camps, birthday parties, and school programs. School science programs represent our largest service area in this realm, serving a total amount of approximately 14,000 or more K through 5 grade students each year. Our Junior Museum and Zoo has received numerous awards for excellence in services schools, including recognition... including recognition in 2005 from the Palo Alto Council of PTAs, the California State Senate, and the State Assembly. So congratulations and thanks to them, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you. And the clerk can call the vote for the Storm Drains.
I have Vice Mayor Niss voting for Hal Mickelson, Richard Whaley, Nancy Clark; Councilmember Schmidt voting for Richard Whaley, Nancy Clark, Mark Harris; Councilmember Klein voting for Hal Mickelson, Richard Whaley, Nancy Clark; Councilmember Price voting for Hal Mickelson, Richard Whaley, Nancy Clark; Councilmember Berman voting for Hal Mickelson, Richard Whaley, Nancy Clark; Mayor Shepherd voting for Hal Mickelson, Richard Whaley, Nancy Clark; Councilmember Burt voting for Hal Mickelson, Richard Whaley, Nancy Clark; Councilmember Scharf voting for Hal Mickelson, Richard Whaley, Nancy Clark; Councilmember Holman voting for Hal Mickelson, Richard Whaley, Nancy Clark. So with nine votes each, Richard Whaley and Nancy Clark, and Hal Mickelson with eight votes, has been appointed to the Storm Drain Oversight Committee.
Thank you. The next agenda item is Councilmember Questions, Comments, and Announcements, and I have a note here from our city attorney. "Councilmembers, we recently moved this standing item from its traditional place at the end of the meeting and early in the meeting, to early in the meeting right after Council member, City Manager comments. The purpose of moving the item was to ensure better communication with the public. We need to remember, however, that the purpose of this item is to make brief announcements for the public or short statements to staff. Our rules say that major policy items will not be discussed or considered, and that the entire item should be limited to 15 minutes, which is less than two minutes per council member." If there is any, if there is time and interest, this may, there may be a meeting management matter that we will discuss at our retreat. Okay, are there any council members that would like to report out any activity? Councilmember Price.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to announce two appointments that I've received. One with the California League of Cities to the Housing, Economic, and Community Development Committee, and the second appointment is by the National League of Cities to the Steering Committee of the Transportation Infrastructure and Services Committee.
Thank you. Councilmember Schmidt.
Just a brief mention of an A-BAG meeting that took place last week. It was a presentation of the Plan Bay Area Update, just to Santa Clara County. That's a new thing for A-BAG to actually have a county meeting. They acknowledged that they have less than four years to present a new Plan Bay Area, so they wanted to gather information on it. And I think it was very helpful to have county perspectives on it. It's incredible how diverse, even within Santa Clara County, the attitudes are toward A-BAG. Two interesting comments were made by A-BAG in the sense of trying to answer the question, "How can we help you?" One of the things they said they're pushing to accomplish is truncated CEQA review for affordable housing, which would make the process quicker and easier for local communities. Second thing they said, that one of the problems with financing affordable housing is you end up, the city ends up making commitments to counties, state, federal funding sources, sometimes four or five in a row in order to cover the cost of affordable housing. And each of those require more and more constraints on what you can do. He said there is an experiment going on in San Francisco, where the city is giving their funds to a private not-for-profit who has much more flexibility in putting together packages of funds which include public and private, and have many less constraints on what the affordable units are and have to attain. He said that might be a good model for making affordable housing much more attractive.
Thank you. And also, we did receive an award from Silicon Valley Leadership Group called Turning Red Tape Into Red Carpet, and this was for a certificate of achievement for the Development Center Blueprint Business Retention and Expansion, and that was picked up by Councilmember Burt down at the holiday event that they hold down at Santa Clara University last December. So. Next item on the agenda is Oral Communications, and we have a few speakers here. This is when you can speak on any agenda, on any item that is not on the council agenda tonight. So our first speaker will speak for three minutes, and Alex Von Felt, followed by Stephanie Munoz.
Alex?
That's me, yes. Alex, good evening, council members. My name is Alexandra Von Felt, or Alex Von Felt, and I'm the Program Director for Actera Stewardship. And Actera is an environmental nonprofit based here in Palo Alto. And our stewardship program has had multiple years of partnership with the City of Palo Alto to engage the community, to improve our local parks and open spaces in creeks. And we do that by bringing out people from the community through our volunteer workdays and getting them to pick up trash and remove invasive species and plant native plants. Some of our projects have included the San Francisco Creek Watershed, where we've been working for over 15 years, and we were able to secure a two-year grant from the Santa Clara Valley Water District to improve about 4,000 linear feet of San Francisco Creek right within Hopkins Park, so you'll see us out there. We've also been working at a rastreada preserve for over 15 years to work on the environment there, as well as help restore Mayfly Creek. And we also have our native plant nursery that grows locally native species that we use for our projects, as well as other agencies and cities, such as the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District. And then most recently, we were awarded the contract to be the steward for Foothills Park, and we're hoping to build on all the great work that the Friends of Foothill have been doing over the years to improve, improve the ecology up there. So why I'm here today is to invite you all to come on out to one of our workdays, and we have one coming up this Monday at Foothills Park from 9:30 to 12:30, and it is in honor of Martin Luther King Day. As you all know, it's now generally accepted, people do Day of Service. So we'll be out there with our volunteers and our staff. The weather's going to be gorgeous, a little too dry for our taste, but still it'd be nice to come out there, so you're welcome to join us. That's Monday from 9:30 to 12:30 at Foothills Park. And I'd like to say thank you very much for all of your support through the years. The City of Palo Alto has really been a true leader. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie Munoz, to be followed by Hal Mickelson.
Good evening and Happy New Year, Mayor Shepherd, council members. I'm Stephanie Munoz. I'm here to remind you that about a year ago, you had an idea about low-income senior housing that was very well received, very enthusiastically received. You said that you wanted the Palo Alto Housing Corporation to put in 60 units of low-income senior housing, and when that went on the ballot, 6,449 people put down their tennis racket, put away their iPad, put away their needlepoint, they stopped what they were doing, and they went down to support you in that idea of having the senior income, the low-income housing. Well, and in fact, even the people who were against the measure that was on the ballot tried to make it very clear that they were okay with senior housing, they just didn't want the million-dollar mansions that were going to come along with it. So personally, I think that it could have been a lot better planned with a senior nutrition center and the Betty Wright Therapeutic Pool and some other items there, but nobody elected me. Nobody cares what I think. It's what you think and what you said you wanted to do. You know, you're all very well thought of in this town. People elected you for a good reason, and they're glad they elected you, and they respect you, they like you. But with all the goodwill in the world, it's very hard not to conclude that if you don't put in the senior housing, that you didn't really want that senior housing all that much. What you really wanted was twice as much market-rate, million-dollar housing that was going to come along with it. I don't think, I don't think you want that. Think about it. Put that housing on that orchard. Go ahead. Just do it. Thanks.
Hal Mickelson, to be followed by Ipa Dupont.
Good evening. I'm Hal Mickelson. I'm a resident of the Green Meadow neighborhood, and please accept my thanks for your confidence in me and asking me to serve again on the Storm Drain Advisory Committee. I'm wearing a completely different hat on a different issue tonight, speaking on behalf of the Palo Alto Chamber of Commerce. On Friday, the council's infrastructure committee asked staff to begin preliminary work on a two-to-three-point increase in the city's transit occupancy tax. The Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here tonight speaking for the Chamber, will not be supporting the increase. We believe an increase in the TOT would be unwarranted and unfair with unintended consequences. One can imagine living in a city where, considering any tax increase, would start with asking whether it would be fair, whether the particular tax was logical in relation to intended uses, whether the people to be taxed are somehow not paying their fair share. I cannot see that the city is asking these questions. No one is arguing that hotels and hotel guests are absorbing a level of city services at a higher rate than they're paying for under the present TOT. Indeed, the city manager very casually said on Friday that he favored raising the money first and only later setting priorities for the ways the money might be used. The city is proceeding on the basis of a consultant's report that says voters are generally opposed to paying higher taxes, but might approve hotel increase, hotel tax increase because they can be persuaded that somebody else will pay for it. We're all, we're all distressed to hear about candidates whose positions are driven by what their campaign pollsters and spin doctors tell them will be politically popular and take a position only when they've heard from those people. I would say with the utmost respect, that's kind of what's going on here. The Chamber's position is primarily based on economics. If the TOT rate in Palo Alto will be 14 or 15%, and the corresponding rate in Santa Clara, Sunnyvale, and Mountain View is 10%, there's every reason to think that people will book hotel rooms in other places. The people who really pay the tax will be the large employers who have very hard-working travel management departments that know how to squeeze every last red cent out of their expense structure, and I think we cannot simply assume that the increase will be, will be ignored. So with the utmost respect, the Chamber is going to take a position urging people to oppose the increase. Thanks very much.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Aram James, and I apologize for the other name I gave you in the box here.
So I wanted to talk about the IPA report that's on the agenda as part of the informational material, informational reports, and more specifically, I wanted to talk about tasers. I think the Police Department did a good job internally, and then it appears that the independent police auditor, Mike Jananco, agreed with a very careful look at the taser activation that hit a 16-year-old youth while he was fleeing on his bicycle, and apparently they've retrained. As part of my conversation about, what I'd like to do tonight is make this a part of a larger conversation with Dennis Burns and the Police Department. Have we reached the point in Palo Alto where we should shelve tasers? Couple of things come to mind. In the independent police auditor's report, we're told on, in the portion on tasers, that there was only one taser discharge in the year 2012, and that was the one involving the bicycle incident. We don't know yet. I'm making a public records request orally tonight, Molly, for the following items. I'd like to know the number of taser discharges in, since the, taser was rolled out in the year 2007. I want to know what the initial cost of tasers were to the city, and the initial, the initial cost for the training of all these officers, and the subsequent annual number of discharges from '07 through '13, and the number of times the department's been sued over taser discharges, and the number of citizens' complaints directly related to discharges, taser discharges. I'll put this in writing tomorrow as well. But what I'm seeing is, is, is good, I think, and that is that we've had a very low number of discharges. There's other, another very interesting comment, first time I've seen the independent police auditor concede something like this. Page four of the report, he talks about, "In past reports, we have commented favorably on the lengthy and substantive training that the Palo Alto Police Department devotes to this controversial force option." He's recognized that this is a very controversial force option. We, I looked at Truth Not Tasers today before the meeting, 52 taser deaths again this year. We're up around 830 taser deaths in North America. And as a historical sub-note footnote, one of your members cast the deciding vote for tasers in 2007. Can anybody tell me, other than Larry Klein, who that person was? It was Larry Klein. So I'm hoping maybe, Larry, that you can undo some of the damage that you did on this last year and work with me and the council to shelve tasers. I don't think they're cost-effective for Palo Alto, and I think they remain in violation of the UN, the UN objective, objective that we not engage in torture. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on our...
Do you have any questions?
Oh, yes, of course. Councilmember Burt.
Mr. City Manager, would you please respond to Mr. Mickelson's characterization of your position at the Infrastructure Committee? I believe there was a misrepresentation.
Yes, council members, and with the, I appreciate the opportunity to clarify that. It was mischaracterized as to what I had stated in the sense of saying, "Let's just raise the tax, and then we'll figure out later what to do." That was not the intent at all. The committee was trying to look at a difficult question of how to balance an infrastructure deficit that, in its totality, is much larger than any of the combination of existing revenue sources were that we had. And as a way to start to, for the committee itself to just sort of work through its process, I had just suggested really that, that, you know, rather than focusing first on the list of projects you want to fund and squeezing that into a revenue source, is to, is to discuss what are the most viable revenue sources that could be available, and what does that begin to yield? And then for the committee to be able to start to match up the needs with them, to see how close you are to being able to doing something viable versus how much you fall short. So I would never make a recommendation that could, could it all be seen to look at any tax increase as something casual, or that something that should not be specifically dedicated to a particular purpose. And I think that that's very clear out of the entire emphasis the council has put forward on the past three to four years on infrastructure. First, in the 18-month process of the Community Infrastructure Blue Ribbon Commission to look at our needs, and then on the work of the Infrastructure Committee on how we just sort of work through these challenging trade-offs to try to make some improvements in the city's infrastructure. Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to the minutes approval, do I have a motion for the minutes? Moved approval by Councilmember Price, seconded by Vice Mayor Niss. All those in favor of the minutes, vote on the board. Minutes are approved unanimously. And on to the consent calendar. Need a motion for the consent calendar?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Berman, seconded by Councilmember Price. All those in favor of the consent calendar?
I just want to comment.
Are we allowed to do comments?
No vote, three minutes after.
If only on a no vote.
And no other comments?
No.
Consent?
No, no. So all those in favor of the consent item, please vote on the board. In favor, just vote on the board. All right, moving into the action items of this evening, the first action item will be weed abatement, item number 14. This is a public hearing, and do we have a staff report on weed abatement? And do we have a staff report on weed abatement?
The representatives from the fire department are here, but no staff presentation? Okay. Nope. I think the written report stands for itself. We just recommend that you conduct a public hearing and consider any objections. I know this is heartbreaking. I'm sorry, I don't mean to pass judgment on this. Any objections at the proposed destruction and removal of weeds and adopt the attached resolution ordering the weed abatement of weed nuisances in the city of Palo Alto? This is actually kind of a requirement that the city conducts every year. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk, are there any public comment on this?
No, there's not, but I do want to note that your place is a revised resolution to be approved tonight.
Yes, that's right. We want to approve the revised resolution, and so I will open and close the public hearings, seeing no public comment, and move for a motion.
So moved.
Motion moved by Councilmember Burt and seconded by Councilmember Price.
Berman.
Excuse me, thank you. I'm going to do this offhand. And I want to read the motion, but can you help? So we have no objections for weed abatement and adoption of resolution ordering weed nuisance abatement. Can we vote on the board? And that, that is carried unanimously. All right. Moving on to the next items on our agenda, item number 15 and 16. We have been asked to take this up together. So the city staff has requested that we call items 15 and 16 together because both items involve amendments to the municipal code that would implement our housing element. The staff has informed us that it will be more efficient to present item 15 and 16 at the same time, since these are overlapping issues. After the staff presentation, we will take public comment on both items. Each speaker will be given one opportunity to comment. Speakers may address item 15 or 16 or both. To ensure that speakers have adequate time for both items, we are going to allow for more than three minutes per speaker. Each speaker may have up to five minutes to speak on these items. And at this time, I don't see any speaker cards up here, but I'm assuming you've got some down there. After public comment, we will return to council for questions, comments, and motions. The council will take up item 15 first and then item 16, since there are two separate ordinances before council, which each require a separate vote. We will now take up items 15 and 16. Staff, we're ready for your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Shepherd. Councilmembers, Hillary Gittleman, Happy New Year. I'm the planning director, and I'm joined by Tim Wong and our staff, who's our housing expert. We're here to talk about two items, both ordinances to amend the municipal code, and both have been recommended for adoption by the Planning and Transportation Commission, and the density bonus ordinance has also been recommended by the Regional Housing Mandate Committee of this council. The two ordinances would bring the city into compliance with state law, avoid the consequences of not complying with state law. Jim and I talked about the first bullet saying, "Obey state law," or something catchy like that. But we're trying to avoid the consequences of not complying with the state laws, and we're trying to get a local density bonus ordinance in place that is better than the default requirements of the state law. And we're going to talk more about this in a minute. As I've mentioned, the two ordinances would amend the municipal code. They would also follow through on commitments that the city made when it adopted its updated housing element, which was certified in August of last year. And it would set the city up for a successful update to the housing element that's due to occur this coming year. In our staff report, we've tried to articulate all of the state requirements and where they derive from. Some of them are in the government code, and some of them are requirements that were put on us by the State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, when they reviewed our last housing element. We've also explained in our staff report that the state density bonus law is the law of the land, whether we adopt an ordinance or not. The law requires bonuses of up to 35 percent. It requires reduced parking requirements, and it requires design exceptions. And again, that's whether we adopt a local ordinance or not. However, there is an opportunity with a local ordinance to get a handle on this by having local procedures in place and by hopefully steering developers towards concessions or design exceptions that we think are less objectionable or less problematic than others. Without a local ordinance, the field is wide open for people to propose really any concession that they can think of, and we have limited ability to deny requests for those concessions. I want to acknowledge, one of the community comments we've received was a really thoughtful analysis by Fred Baylen. It was his report to the neighbor, and he zeroed in on this, the fact that you have to do this density, local density bonus ordinance, and then it provides an opportunity to make things better by having some local procedures in place. There are some consequences for not complying with state law and for not implementing and updating the housing element in a timely fashion. First of all, any person or organization can challenge, can file suit to challenge the city if the city fails to implement the programs in its existing housing element. And the State Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, can set the bar even higher next time around when they review our element if they find that we're failing or lagging behind in implementing our current element. When it comes to updating the housing element again, which as I say, we have to do by the end of the year, actually by the end of January 2015, there are significant penalties in the law for the first time, so the city doesn't have the luxury it had last time of taking its time and thoughtful, you know, many-year process to get to the endpoint. We have to get this done, or we face potentially having to update our housing element every four years. So the, instead of an eight-year cycle, it becomes a four-year cycle. In addition, again, any individual or organization can file suit to force compliance with the law, and a sort, a court can assert, can compel the city to update its element and retain jurisdiction over related matters. All of these things, as you can imagine, end up costing a lot of time and energy in addition to taxpayers' dollars. To wrap up, I wanted to summarize some of the information available to you this evening at Places and also some of the input we've received from members of the public. First, at Places this evening, you received a memo summarizing the implications of not complying with the housing element update requirements. You also received a list of the CN zone parcels that are affected by the housing element ordinance. And just to review, there are 32 total sites, most of them fairly small, that are affected by one of the changes in the ordinance that would allow 20 units to the acre rather than 15 units to the acre on CN zone parcels in the city's housing inventory. Total of 32 sites. Citywide, we're talking about enabling just over 60 additional units. In addition, this evening, you received a red line version of the density bonus ordinance with some corrections. Most notice, notably, the concession related to rear yard setbacks was mistakenly included at 50 percent in the version you received in your packet, and the correction follows the lead and the recommendation of the Regional Housing Mandate Committee and takes that to 25 percent. Our apologies for that error in your packet. We also, in the version you received this evening, have used red lines to show those portions of the density bonus ordinance that derive directly from state law. This was something we provide to the regional, we provided to the Regional Housing Mandate Committee, and we thought the full council would be interested in that annotation as well. And that brings me to some of the community input. We received lots of community comments and questions regarding Section 18.15.050F, as in Frank, which would give 100 percent affordable projects the ability to request incentives that are not on the list of concessions contained in the density bonus ordinance. This is not required by state law, if you looked at the red line version we gave you tonight, and therefore it may be modified or omitted by action of the council. It's entirely up to you, and we'd be happy to answer any questions about that. I also wanted to thank Mr. Hirsch and Ms. Lilienstein. They spent a lot of time with me last night talking about this and other sections of the, of the proposed ordinance, and I think made it much clearer for Tim and for myself, and allowed us to focus in on some of these questions and comments. We also got some questions from the public regarding CEQA compliance, and the story there is that the density bonus ordinance essentially implements a requirement that's already in state law. And so the city is not taking a discretionary action that would allow anything new to happen, and therefore we don't think CEQA review is required. On the other housing ordinance, we've already anticipated the actions included in that ordinance when the city adopted its housing element, and that element received CEQA review, so we think we're taken care of there. In both cases, individual projects that benefit from these concessions and bonuses will be subject to individual review when they come forward to the city. So that's another safeguard in the CEQA process. I'm getting close to the end here, but we got a comment about parking, or several comments about parking, and I just wanted to clarify that the standards in the state density bonus law cannot be changed. We cannot go and require more parking than is included in the, in the law, and if you look at the red line version or the highlighted version of the ordinance we handed you tonight, you'll see that those parking standards are directly from the state law. Finally, a number of typos and suggestions that we got late today and we, from Mr. Borack, and we'd be happy to respond to those if the council has further questions moving forward. With that, you know, I think it'd be great to hear the public testimony. We'd like an opportunity to respond if needed at the end of that testimony, and we're available to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for both items number 15 and 16. And we do have speakers, and you will be able to speak for five minutes. Our first speaker will be Stephanie Munoz, to be followed by Robert Moss.
Good evening. It's very appropriate that Councilmember Schmid was commenting on the ABAG meeting that he went to, because we all have to think about it quite a bit. On Saturday, State Senator Hill had a, one of his constituent meetings, Councilmember Burt was there, and a number of people spoke to the overview that the, that the state is holding on affordable, on housing and on density. And a number of people spoke against a greater density, although it was, it went unspoken that the, the basic idea that the state has is a good idea. If you put in industry and workers are going to work in that in order to make the money, you really have some kind of obligation to furnish housing for those workers. And if you don't, then the next town down the line, and the next town down the line, and the next town on the line have to furnish that housing. And the result is that the towns in between become literally a doormat. Fifty years ago, I lived in, my husband and I and our children lived in South Los Altos when the Stanford Industrial Park went in and the Xerox Park. You couldn't get out of your driveway. It was a constant stream of, of workers from Cupertino and San Jose coming up to the Stanford Industrial Park. And finally, the county took out the train. Phil Flint talked in front of the ICC and the county and the everything, and, and Bob Debs, some of you may remember. They tried and tried and tried, and people said, "But, but, but, but..." And they said, "Well, you voted for..." "No, no, we didn't vote to take out the train." "Well, you voted to spend the money, and that's just the same thing. We'll tell you, and we're taking out the train." They didn't say it like that, of course. They said it in a bureaucratic way. We lost a train. Right now, the, the whole state is in turmoil because of high-speed rail and, and all of the housing plans are trying to reorient around the railroads. You took out a train. The train went to the South Valley, and it met up with the main line at California Avenue. And we, we tried. I remember Mr. Potts, "The people of this county have chosen rubber-tire transportation." Baloney. Anyway, I would say that the, what the state is doing with regard to density is not well-thought-out at all. Cities have a pretty good idea. Even 50 and 100 years ago, they had an idea of how the city should grow in an orderly way. You know, it's only cancer cells that just grow, 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 and don't grow according to a pattern. Long ago, they decided, "All right, we'll have retail, ground floor retail, and we can add residential on top of that, the way European cities do, well, the way American cities do too, San Francisco." It's, it's, the most common way is to have retail on the ground floor and housing above it. If we had done that through the 50 years that we've been putting in offices, we'd have three or five, we'd have enough. But is that three minutes? Two minutes? Where am I?
You have five minutes, so you have about 45 seconds.
Oh. Sorry. Okay.
But you don't have to use the whole amount. It's just, we're, we're combining the two public...
Forty-five seconds? Okay. I think really, in spite of what our attorney has said, we are going to have to work with the state level. It does not work for them to say that if we are going to permit some change, that it has to be even more change. It's like, it's like rare rabbits saying to rare fox, "Oh, please don't throw me on the briar patch." The city of Palo Alto wants more density. They'll do anything for more, as long as it's density that produces money. So the state has got to change its way of phrasing things so that they emphasize that it has to be low-income housing, not density.
There you go.
Thank you.
That's the five minutes. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Robert Moss, to be followed by...
Robert Moss.
Robert, well, yeah, he's going to speak on both, to be followed by Patricia Saffir.
Thank you, Mayor Shepherd, and councilmembers. I was kind of surprised that the letter I sent last Wednesday wasn't included in the packet, but I assume you all got it anyway. First, on item 15, the changes to the CN zone concern me. As you know, I was one of the people that created that zone some 40 years ago, and our intent was to allow, in fact, encourage viable retail along El Camino, particularly along Baron Park and Ventura. I won't go into what we had there 40 years ago, but it was nice that we got rid of all of the auto repair shops and whorehouses, and did put in a number of retail establishments. But most of those are single-story and a few two-story buildings. At the time the CN zone was created, housing was allowed on the upper floor because they thought, "Well, we can do that." And I pointed out that in order to have housing viable, you had to have parking, and the then-planning director said, "Oh, no problem, because we require underground parking, and nobody does underground parking, and that's much too expensive." Well, of course, the economy has changed since then, and we will have underground parking, and if this change in allowable density goes forward, I'm afraid we're going to start losing our existing local retail. The buildings will be torn down and redeveloped primarily for housing, and we're going to lose the walkable environment that we've worked at for so many years. I don't understand why it's necessary to increase the housing density at this point. We have an approved housing element. We don't have a requirement currently to increase the number of housing units that we have to identify. We can identify additional sites besides the ones which already have been identified at the existing zoning density and still show we have an increased potential for housing. So why don't we step back and wait? I don't think this needs to be done now. Second, I was concerned that in the case of the CN zone, if somebody comes in with low, low-income housing... low-income housing and requests concessions, that unlike the other zones, the CN zone height could go from 25 feet, not to 35 or 40 feet, but to 50 feet. Most of the CN sites along El Camino back up to single-family homes. In some cases, there's a 12- or 15-foot alley between the residential and commercial, but most of the lots, especially on the Barron Park side, and most of the lots on the Ventura side, are only 100 feet deep. So when a building is put up there, it's going to be very close, very close to the residential buildings, and making it 50 feet tall is going to be an awful imposition on the residential neighborhoods. I also don't understand why the FAR goes up instead of .9 to 1.0. And that doesn't make any sense either. Why are we trying to densify the CN zone, which was created to be a low-density, low-intensity, primarily-retail site? So I would hope that you'd kill this 20-unit increase in the CN. Now, addressing item 16, we talk about, among other things, concessions. I can't understand why we're proposing more than three concessions in order to get affordable housing. In 1974, Palo Alto was one of the first cities in the country to require, require, a certain percentage of BMR units in every residential development over a certain threshold. Originally, it was 40% BMR units for 20 units or more, and over the years, that's been adjusted a number of times. But never in 38 years did Palo Alto have to give any concessions to a developer who built low-income housing as a portion of their project. So I can't see why we have to consider giving additional concessions. Finally, a developer can't ask for as many as three concessions, and you have scaled back the relaxation you can give. I would suggest that you take a close look at limiting the concessions that are granted. So for example, if somebody asks for a 25% setback concession, a 25% front yards concession, and a height concession, he can get all of one of them, but only half of the other two. You can do that. You're not required to give them a full 100% of whatever concession he asked for. But giving concessions for increasing the density, especially along El Camino, where we already have a problem with traffic and parking, and where we don't want to destroy existing businesses, is a bad idea.
Thank you. We are now up to 11 speakers, which will take us till 10 o'clock, so if you don't need all of your five minutes, that would be appreciated. Patricia Safer, followed by Susan Feinberg.
I'm here tonight because I want to urge you to approve these zoning changes, which are necessary to implement our long-overdue and recently-adopted housing element. Local newspapers have been full lately of articles describing the Bay Area housing shortages, so maybe the A-Bag projections were not as overblown as some of us thought. I want my community, Palo Alto, to be willing to attempt to do its share of providing needed housing, and I don't think that we will ruin our community by doing so. So I'm glad we finally have an acceptable housing element, and please, give the necessary zoning changes so we can go ahead and do what we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Feinberg, to be followed by Aram James.
Mayor Shepherd, councilmembers, good evening. I'm Susan Feinberg, 361 Tioga Court in Palo Alto. The process to update the comprehensive plan, including the housing element, began in 2006. That was eight years and something like 100 public meetings ago. Yet, in recent council discussions about the future of Palo Alto, councilmembers have stated that they can't discern what the voters want, and can't draw conclusions from the defeat of Measure D. What was the takeaway from all of those public meetings? This total disconnect suggests that there are two problems. First, with how the city engages the public, and second, with the intermediate components of the comprehensive plan update, such as the housing element, the concept area plans for Cal Ave and East Meadow Circle, and the downtown study. They should have been completed in a timely basis so that they would feed into the comprehensive plan update and inform your policy decisions regarding zoning ordinances. I would like to ask you if these three studies will be presented to the public before the next housing element requires approval in January 2015. What is the schedule, and what resources are required so that the public can have a meaningful role in the next housing element and comp plan update? You must not continue to make land-use decisions and policies to rezone without being informed by our own land-use planning studies. There are two steps that council can take to prevent the city from being in exactly the same position next January. First, an amendment to sunset the proposed ordinance, number 15, at the end of December 2014. This will show the public that we are not locked into zoning updates without the benefit of public engagement and policies formulated by these three upcoming plans. Secondly, I would ask that you direct staff to come back next month with a detailed timeline and list of resources required for staff and outside consultants for the 2015 to 2023 housing plan, so that there is time for a plan and meaningful public participation. For item number 16, I'd like to ask you, do the citizens of Palo Alto matter? I used to ask you if the comprehensive plan matters. You are playing a shell game with CEQA review. The proposed ordinance in item 16 states that individual projects will be subject to CEQA review, so consequently, the proposed ordinance is exempt from CEQA review, quote from the staff report, "Since it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility, the adoption and implementation of this ordinance may have significant effects on the environment." This circular logic stating that the zoning ordinances are exempt from CEQA review because they are just ink on paper. To the contrary, there is fair argument that this ordinance will cause significant negative impacts. It exceeds the minimum requirements mandated by state density bonus law in Government Code Section 65915. The impacts of the proposed ordinance have not been reviewed. They are being done piecemeal outside the context of our comp plan update. They are being undertaken at this time, so we will qualify for streamlined review of the next housing element cycle that is due, excuse me, in 2015. There has been no analysis or understanding of the negative impacts caused by traffic, construction, school overcrowding, in the absence of analysis for construction of new schools, infrastructure capacity for water, electric, sewer, gas, road, parking, the availability of community services like parks, libraries, fire and rescue, and the public's health and safety. In the absence of an updated comprehensive plan that would analyze the baseline conditions and the impacts, and without any CEQA review of this ordinance, there is a fair argument that this ordinance will cause significant negative impacts. Thank you.
Thank you. Aram James, to be followed by Eric Filth, Phil Seth.
One little request. When City Council starts asking questions, and we get answers like CN zone and ORLM, it would benefit the public, and it would benefit myself, who's new at this housing element stuff, if we could actually say what those things meant, so we're not just listening to code. It'd be very helpful to promote transparency on this issue. I want to focus in on one section, section, section two, this on page two of the document, not yet-approved ordinance attachment A, specifically-- I apologize? Which one? This is the, this is 15, thank you. Section 18.040.030A/50, definition of emergency shelter. It says, "Emergency shelter means a facility or use which provides temporary housing six months or less for homeless individuals or families, and may involve supplemental services. Supplemental services may include, but are not limited to, meal preparation and activities, center daycare for homeless persons, children, vocational rehabilitation, and other similar activities." And I hope this isn't just something that's being thrown out there that's really illusory. Nobody really wants to talk about it. Nobody really wants to have an emergency shelter. I hope we're going to have a robust conversation about this portion of it. I also see that on the report, City Council staff-- and Mr. Keen, just so we know what we're talking about, I'm not sure how to identify this report for the record, but on the third page, there's a discussion--
Can you, can you get on mic, please?
Yeah, it's still item 15.
I'll just come right back to Mike, but I wanted to converse with Mr. Keen for a moment there. Staff has enlisted InVision's assistance in developing emergency shelter standards for the ORLME district, which I'm told is out on the east side, out in a business district on the way to the Duck Pond, and will report back to the council on the progress of this effort. I'd like you to talk to Mr. Wong, the city planner, about that, and whether this is really just thrown in there to make people feel good, or are we actually going to have InVision brought into the conversation about a new shelter that's desperately needed? And I'd also like, when you talk with the city planner, and I read some of the verbatim minutes of December 11, 2013, and it was difficult for me to comprehend some of the code stuff here, but I do know that on page two of the verbatim, this is Mr. Wong, senior planner, and again, there's a lot that came before it, so I'm not reading the entire context of what he had to say, but he said, "And so in response to SB2 requirements, staff proposes to amend the definition sections of the zoning code to add supportive housing and transitional housing and multifamily residential uses, and also to amend the research office light manufacturing, ROLM east of Barcadaro, excuse me, east of 101 Zone, to add emergency shelters as permitted use and to establish performance and design standards," whatever that means. "Therefore, if a developer submits an application that meets the emergency shelter standards in the ROLME Zone District, it must be approved without discretionary review." So therefore, this is a, this is by, this is by right use, and this is a map showing the ROLME Zone District. All of those parcels in that Zone District are with the cross-sketched red crisscross. So any parcel in that Zone District would be eligible for an emergency shelter use and standard. Why are we limited to that one area of Palo Alto that would be out of walking distance for people using a homeless shelter to get to services? Are we, again, going to be, even if we have a shelter like this, segregating it, or are we going to do something more like the Opportunity Center, where people can walk to services? So I'd really like somebody to pick up the ball for me when we talk to Mr. Wong and the other people involved in this, about this particular section. And is this just some cruel hoax that we're putting out when we know we need more shelters in Palo Alto, or is this something that's really serious? And I hope it's the latter. So I'd appreciate it if somebody on council would ask the questions, take up the ball for me, because I have lots of questions, but I'm not in a position to be able to ask them and get answers in this particular forum. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Eric Filth and Cheryl Lillenstein. So Cheryl, thank you. You'll have five minutes. And Herb Borak will follow Cheryl.
Thank you. I'm Cheryl Lillenstein. I'm president of Palo Altons for Sensible Zoning, and I understand we're talking about both of these, and I apologize to Hillary for not having seen what she presented, but I'll look at it later. I understand, this is about the zoning ordinance update. I understand that the city needs to identify properties that can be upzoned to 20 units per acre in order to comply with the state's requirement for providing low-income development options for landowners. And I'm puzzled as to why most of the upzoning is happening on El Camino, when downtown and California Avenue are the designated sites because they are transit hubs. I've done an informal count of the maximum residential unit yield for those properties, based on the staff report, to be rezoned to allow 20 units per acre. University Avenue area has 167 units. California Avenue area has 340 units. And the sections of El Camino that are not near California Avenue have 634 units. So El Camino has about twice that of California Avenue, and about four and a half times the number identified for University Avenue. And El Camino has little neighborhood-serving retail, and you could hardly call it a transit hub. So while the comprehensive plan says one thing, something else is being done to comply with state mandates. What can be done to get the mandates and the comprehensive plan aligned with one another before the narrowest part of El Camino becomes a full-on construction site? So that's a question I would really love to hear a proposal about, because I don't think, I understand that this upzoning is a requirement that the state is imposing, and that people feel compelled to comply. So, but I would like a remedy. Okay, so this is about the density bonus. Most of the density bonus ordinance is a great improvement over not having one at all. I appreciate the work that went into setting limits on the density bonuses, because this offers everyone predictability, and thus, a much less stressful environment in which to navigate changes. It would be much more productive to focus on the next housing element, except there's a problem with section 18.15.050F. This section allows council broad powers to change any parcel's zoning, any parcel, anywhere in the city, and develop any scale and any height with no setbacks or parking requirements in order to produce high-density, 100% low-income projects. This is not right. If section 18.15.050F is removed tonight, it will go a long way towards building trust with the community. If this item is retained, it could destroy the Palo Alto that we all enjoy and that you are entrusted to protect. It could cause significant harm and environmental changes. With regard to CEQA, I would like to enter into the record that there is a fair argument that this ordinance will cause significant negative impacts, and it exceeds the minimum requirements mandated by state law. Certainly, this clause exceeds that. There are going to be cumulative effects of traffic and parking and the problems of needed infrastructure. So I urge you to eliminate the CEQA clause as well, because it's simply not true. Please remove the CEQA clause statement so that the rest of the ordinance could be supported with the understanding that the housing element due in 2014 has time to make improvements for this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Herb Borak, to be followed by William Ross. Cheryl, Scott, another.
Good evening, Mayor Shepherd and councilmembers. First, on item number 15, you already heard from Mr. James about the standards, which refer to as the Emergency Shelter Quality Assurance Standards, that are still being discussed with InVision Shelter Network. Those standards should be approved by the council after receiving public input on whatever those draft standards are, and they should be in place by the effective date of this ordinance. They can, they don't have to be part of the ordinance, but they need to be something that have to be in place when the ordinance gets in effect, since they're referred to in the ordinance. And they need part of a public process, and they need the council to be the one that approves them. The second thing I have to say, on reasonable accommodations for accessibility, staff has indicated that these improvements could-- has indicated that these improvements could be removed after the qualifying resident leaves, and then goes on and says, "Don't do it." I think just the opposite should be the case, that—just as with the use permit, when the use goes away, the right also goes away. And so those changes that were given for accessibility, when the person who needs that accessibility is no longer there, those changes should be restored to what the normal zoning requires. There was one more thing in the ordinance that was not in my letter, and that's on packet page four ninety-two, referring to appeals on the accessibility. And it refers to the appeal process going to the Planning Commission per chapter eighteen point seven seven. I think that should be stated more precisely, because it's the council that decides on appeals, and in this case, I guess it would be on recommendation of the Planning and Transportation Commission, and so perhaps just tracking the language from eighteen point seven seven. On item number sixteen, I had sent you a letter by email. It's a three-page letter. Unfortunately, the copy that you have at places are pages one and three, but not page two, so I prepared another version, which I'll have the clerk distribute after I talk, and I'll try to go through each of the items in the letter. The current version that you received tonight corrects the reference to Civil Code section of forty-one hundred. On packet page five nineteen, the approval authority on when to build the sequence for non-restricted units and restricted units provides staff the ability to have the market-rate units built first and then the affordable units. I don't think you should have that authority. I think the affordable units should be built no later than the market-rate units. There was a footnote on table two, note two, should be concessions or incentives, packet page five twenty-one. Then on packet page five twenty-two, items roaming numero one through six, it uses vague language that's undefined, and I think it should be defined. First, it says, quote, "Consistent with the applicable design standards and guidelines," unquote. Have no idea what that's referring to. We have development regulations in the zoning code. We have guidelines for some zone districts. It should be—there should be definitions in this ordinance that we specifically refer to documents that have terms of art. Similarly, there's the word "consistent," with no definition of what that means. And we're talking about something that, for the most part, would be done in private by the Director of Planning and Community Environment. There are a couple of paragraph subdivisions which have the wrong numbers. On packet page five twenty-two, F should be D. Packet page five twenty-three, G should be E. On packet page five twenty-three, we've already heard some of the speakers on eighteen point one five oh five oh F. First, there's—the very next section says you need some pro formas if you're going to be exceeding the concessions that anyone else would get. Here you have a section that says you don't even have to do that. In addition, it violates the Government Code section six five nine one five that provides a trade-off of concessions for getting the density bonus. So it violates the law. On packet page five twenty-nine, section three, staff has put in the words for Government Code section six five nine one five in section three, but it's still left in the obsolete Senate Bill eighteen eighteen that has twice been recodified, restated, and recodified. Yes, I know that was what they were looking at, the bill, six years ago when this all started, but it's no longer relevant. Finally, I will add something that's not in my letter, and that is, on packet page five twelve—
I'm going to have to interrupt you because our buzzer did not go all the way out. So if you could just summarize your—make up your points.
I said, "Finally." On packet page five twelve, at the last full paragraph, it has stated two projects that were approved under this Government Code section. You just recently approved the third one, and you may want to amend that to include that third project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. William Ross, to be followed by Fred Baylen.
Good evening. My comments are legal in nature, but focused on my capacity as a taxpayer. I've referenced in a communication to the council, and I think you're well-served by your planning official to combine both these hearings, because they're absolutely related. I don't see how you can expect the public to comment intelligently on either of them without acknowledging and summarizing the existing litigation you're involved in right now. The Sterling Park case has been to the California Supreme Court. The decision that was made by the trial court was set aside. It's been remanded to the trial court. You're going to go to trial probably in June or July of this year. You have the West Meadow project, and that case, which involves just seven residential units, that was decided on the same basis that's at the Sixth District Court of Appeal, that's going to be remanded back to the trial court for a same determination on that. Overall, the whole matter of the issue of BMR and exactions versus regulation is now before the State Supreme Court in a very similar ordinance that the city of San Jose has formulated. The city of San Jose is following a course, though, that I think you should very strongly consider, and that is to accomplish a nexus study. If you're going to make this exaction, why not do a nexus study so the fees that you're going to impose are imposed equally and not for just a subclass of developers? And that's a phrase that was raised in your Sterling Park litigation, in the West Meadow litigation, and is raised in the State Supreme Court by the city of San Jose. If you're anxious to get affordable housing and below-market-rate housing, why not make it applicable to all development, including commercial development, not just residential development? I'm sure your planning staff can tell you there are ordinances that do that. But the primary issue that I see right now is there needs to be a better staff report about your litigation status. What's going to happen if you pass this? What's your position going to be in trial court in June if the Supreme Court comes down and says something different? This just doesn't seem to be the right time to be advancing forward. You can't look to the legislature. The governor made it very clear, after your Supreme Court case, Sterling Park, and then the acceptance of the San Jose case by the State Supreme Court, that he wasn't going to get involved. So why not wait and see what some of the legal implications might be, but certainly mention in the staff report so that people can comment intelligently that you are, in fact, involved in litigation on BMR litigation right now? I think, very pragmatically, I'd have to ask the question. Why should a seven-unit subdivision in the south part of Palo Alto be subjected to a fee, but enormous amounts of square footage of commercial development for office structures not? It's clear, if you look at the concepts for inclusionary housing requirements, that commercial development generates just as much of a need as does residential development. Stated quite pragmatically again, where are the people that are going to be janitors in all these buildings going to live? They should contribute to this also. That benefits everybody. There's more money. So why don't you do the nexus study instead of litigating about it? I would hope that you could refer this back to staff, that there'd be an analysis of Sterling Park, that you could look at the city of San Jose case before the State Supreme Court and ask the critical question that they're asking. Is this regulation, meaning it's subject to compensation by us all, or is it actually an exaction? That's not even analyzed here. In other words, there may be greater costs associated with what you're doing because it's actually a regulatory taking. I don't think you want to go there. You don't have that kind of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred Baylen, to be followed by Joe Hirsch.
Good evening, and I can talk slow. In nineteen seventy-three, or as Bob says, nineteen seventy-four, from his research, Palo Alto became the first California municipality to enact an inclusionary zoning ordinance. And four decades later, it remains a part of only one-fourth of municipalities that have adopted one. R Code requires fifteen or twenty percent of residential units as below-market without any concessions. But under state law, including as few as five or ten percent of the units as BMRs, not only triggers a density bonus, a parking exception, and another concession, but requires no additional BMR units. They don't have to meet R Inclusionary Zoning Code under the density bonus law. State law not only undercuts our ordinance, but it takes no notice of Palo Alto's noble efforts. Bob Moss brought this up directly and publicly to Jerry Hill at Saturday morning's outreach at Printers, Inc. The senator listened, understood, and said he would look at the issue of customizing. We need to follow up. We are told that state law freezes much of our local ordinance. So be it. Your job is to be sure that what we do have control over, we do right, or we get it right. The stakes are high, because the projects that have and will make use of the law are, in effect, PCs. But one with a crucial difference. Approved as a record of land-use action rather than as an ordinance, they are not subject to referendum. So the public is concerned. Pushed back in late summer, and you properly moved this item to Subcommittee, which held two productive meetings. Now we scramble again. Thursday evening packet, staff report with no minutes. It's late in the day, and so for those of you in any way unclear about details, ask your questions and then request a continuance. Here are three key areas. The menu of concessions, requirements when going off-menu, and other additions. The menu is substantially improved. Items trimmed, others limited. Protection for neighboring low-density residential. Height, floor area, and site coverage increases directly tied to the extent of BMR units. And in mixed use, the additional FAR goes into the residential units, not extra-commercial development. PCs are not allowed, as the way you have it, which makes sense. And any changes that come across go with the building, not with the land. So if it's torn down, that was also put in by you guys. How best to keep applicants on the menu and avoid the much greater concessions we've seen to date in the three projects? Pro formas, evidence of cost reduction, other financial information, applicant reimbursement of city consultants, director's decision. Is that enough? Think about it. Finally, the city-generated section for not only menu changes, but also additional concessions for one-hundred-percent-affordable projects. This should be removed. It is not mandated by the state. Leads us directly back to eight oh one Alma setbacks and Mayville Avenue fears. A thirty-five-percent density bonus, exception, and three concessions, including proving your case off-menu, provides ample opportunity for projects that are truly worthy. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Joe Hirsch.
Mayor Shepherd, city council members. First, I will read my comments, because I had tried to get them into three minutes. But first, I would like to recognize with appreciation the meeting I held with Hillary Gittleman and Tim Wong last Friday afternoon. They were kind enough to give me time, and I appreciate that. I am concerned that, given the definition of approval authority, final approval of concessions may be made by the ARB, the Planning Commission, or the Planning Director. Given that concessions are major changes to our zoning code, and finalization should only be made by this body, our elected representatives. And my comments tonight will be only with regard to item sixteen. And in many respects, it's with regard to clarification of the proposed ordinance. If a development is eligible for X concessions, one, two, or three, and the developer only asks for X concessions, are those concessions automatically granted? Or does the approval authority have discretion to deny them or restrict the amount requested? Who determines the percentage in an up to X percent concession is appropriate? If more than the permitted concessions are requested, does the approval authority have the ability to select which ones will be granted? It seems here that the ordinance lacks clarity by failing to spell out what degree of control the city has over development falling within the purview of the ordinance. This should be made clear by revising the ordinance. The words "unless" adjacent to "a lower-density residential zone" were intended to protect people in those zones. However, the ordinance doesn't say what happens if the proposed development is, in fact, next to such a zone, and that should be made clear. If I understand what is contemplated, the menu caps are no longer applicable, and that upon further review, the menu caps could be exceeded, maybe significantly. That also should be made clear, as I don't believe the community understands that residential protection is not fully assured. I feel that the up to fifty percent increase in floor area ratio in sub-paragraph IV on page eleven is excessive. It, along with the paragraph F at the bottom of page eleven, encourage high-density development, which people so strongly objected to in the vote on Measure D. I urge you to eliminate both of them from the ordinance. You are not required by state law to enact either of those provisions, particularly paragraph F that completely sidesteps our zoning code, which is particularly disturbing. People want our zoning code to meet something, or, quote, "Why have it?" as recently questioned by Councilmember Holman. There is extremely strong sentiment in this community against further high-density development with all of its many adverse consequences. Please do not enact anything that supports that high-density development. There are many other provisions of the ordinance that are unclear and require redrafting. Please refer it back to staff or the Planning Commission for reworking. If something must be enacted soon, then enact only that portion that is mandated by state law. Send the rest back for reworking so the community can better understand what happens if and when those provisions are enacted. Councilmember Holman said that the council needs to regain the trust of the community. Councilmember Burt said that the council needs to reestablish its credibility with the community. This is the time to do so by not rushing to enact something that is unclear and needs to be better drafted. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I will now close the public hearing and move this back to staff, back to council. And we're going to take up item number fifteen, and then we're going to take up item number sixteen. And Councilmember Klein.
Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor. I believe staff wanted the opportunity to respond to any public comments. That might be a good time to do this now?
Right. I was looking—Hillary, did you want to respond to anything? You didn't give me a signal, so I wasn't—
I'm sorry. There are just a few things. I'll make it real quick.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And I think these are about both fifteen and sixteen. First, I just wanted to—and I should have done this in my intro, Mr. Moss's comment about the changes in the text of the zoning ordinance to allow densities of twenty units to the acre rather than fifteen units to the acre in that—one—in that one collection of sites. Again, this affects thirty-two sites and creates the potential for an additional sixty-plus units citywide. It does—as Mr. Moss suggested—that the sites could lose their retail, existing retail could be lost as a result of this program. And I just wanted to explain that the sites were chosen and originally included on the housing inventory because it was thought that they will redevelop— housing inventory because it was thought that they will redevelop at some point, whether or not the housing element was adopted, whether or not this zoning ordinance is adopted. And also to respond to one of the concerns that was raised, that zoning district requires mixed-use development. So we're not going to just see residential projects on those sites. That would be, it would always be in the context of mixed use. And then I think most importantly of the comments we got, I'd like to respond to the suggestion that there's, quote, "circular logic" on the SEQA piece when it comes to the density bonus ordinance. We've made a thoughtful run at this and really considered what physical impacts this ordinance could create that are not already possible because of state law. And our thinking is that all we're doing is codifying state law in a local ordinance. We're not enabling higher densities. You know, the state law says 35% density bonus. The local ordinance has 35% density bonus. The state law has parking reductions. The local ordinance has those parking reductions. So we're not changing the ballgame or the rules of the game here. And as a result, we've concluded that it, quote, "can be seen with certainty that there will not be a significant impact on the environment." In addition to that, we point to the fact that individual projects that come forward under this ordinance will be subject to SEQA review. So there's an opportunity to review site-specific impacts that we could not speculate about at this point. And so we feel quite strongly that the SEQA issue, when it comes to both ordinances, and the speakers were talking to the density bonus ordinance, that ordinance as well have been addressed. Just a couple more things. I'm going to let the attorneys respond on the case of existing litigation if they choose to, but I wanted to clarify that these ordinances create incentives in response to state requirements. They do not impose exactions. And it is precisely because exactions and inclusionary requirements are under attack statewide that I think the state is imposing more and more requirements for these kind of incentives. There's a shift going on in California, and that's what we're seeing when we are asked to adopt these local incentive programs. Let's see. There was a suggestion that our, that the density bonus ordinance somehow undercuts our inclusionary ordinance, and I didn't follow that exactly, but it is true that if a developer proposes a project and meets our inclusionary requirements by providing a certain number of low or very low-income units, those units will potentially qualify them for a density bonus under the ordinance, and there's nothing we can do about that. That's a state, an interpretation of the state courts, and we're stuck with it. Finally, there was, in Mr. Hirsch's discussion of clarity on the list of concessions that are available, he suggested it wasn't clear if concessions were available when a site was adjacent to a lower-density residential area. And I think the Regional Housing Mandate Committee did a great job of tailoring that list to make it very clear that those concessions are not available to sites that abut those lower-density residential zones. And I think that is clear from, from the way the ordinance is drafted. With that, you know, Tim and I are available to answer any questions you have.
Yes, go ahead, Molly.
So just very briefly, City Attorney Molly Stump, responding to Mr. Ross's comments. You know, he mentioned the two cases that Palo Alto does have active in litigation with respect to the inclusionary housing requirement in local law. And tonight's items do bear a topic commonality with that litigation, but really there are the similarity ends. As you know, there is ongoing litigation both in this jurisdiction and in San Jose on inclusionary housing. Ordinances adopted by localities, including Palo Alto. The density bonus state statute and these proposed local ordinances are a distinct tool that does also address the issue of providing affordable housing in communities. And we think the council can move forward this evening and should do so, assuming you resolve your policy questions, irrespective of the fact that there is ongoing litigation and will be further development in the area of the inclusionary housing technique. And Carr, did you have anything to add?
Okay, very good. Thank you. And we will now be taking up item number 15, and we will be taking up item number 16 after we're finished with item number 15. This item is the Housing Element Zoning Revisions. And Councilmember Klein, you have the floor.
Well, hate to destroy the process, but since all the discussions have been about both of them at the same time, that's where my questions are going to go to. The, and my question is to Hillary and to Molly. And thank you, Hillary, for providing this copy at our places tonight, showing all of the language that really is required by the state. And I want to, before we go much further, I appreciated your comment, Hillary, about what we're talking about tonight, which is basically the state requiring us to, or thinking they're requiring us, to include a lot of language in our ordinances. And it's not about us doing a lot of other things. It's not about, for example, rezoning any properties, as one speaker mentioned. But my main overriding concern, I have some subsidiary ones as well, is I find this whole process to be very confusing. And I've really scratched my head trying to think of another example where the state says, "You shall include in your ordinances laws that we, the state, have already passed." Why are we doing that? I think that when the voters vote for any of us here in the city council, they expect us to use our best judgment as to what to put in our ordinances. But here, the state is saying, "You shall put these in your ordinances," meaning I and my colleagues have no discretion, or seemingly so. And I can't think of an example where we're forced to do that. It seems to me that this is almost, I don't know what it is. Well, what occurs to me is this is when orthodoxies of one kind or another say to their underlings, swear a loyalty oath to me, or to it. So how do I say, for example, how do I exercise the discretion that I think the voters put in our hands to say, "I don't agree with this proposed increase in the CN zoning density from 15 to 20." And I may have other differences of opinion as well. And I just don't see the reason. I understand that the state can overrule us and put into a thing, affect things that we have to obey. It occurs to me, just for an example, that virtually every meeting we have concern that involves SEQA. To some degree or other, it also involves the Brown Act. But we haven't enacted SEQA. We haven't enacted the Brown Act as part of our ordinances. Never occurred to me that we would. So why is this different? Why is it that we have to do this? What happens if we don't? And I'm referring only to the ones that you put in here as the identical language that the state already has. And how do I exercise my discretion?
Through the chair, let me take a stab at that. First, with regard to item number 16, the density bonus ordinance, that's the ordinance that we provided you with highlights showing the text that's taken exactly from the state law. I share your frustration. It is like a loyalty oath. I don't really understand why the state legislature has done this, but they have done it. They have enacted a state law that says that local jurisdictions must codify this provision of state law.
Let me just interrupt for a moment. Why wouldn't it be sufficient, then, for us to say, "The state has required us to include this in our ordinances." We have neither passed it or rejected it. It is just something that the state has directed us to do.
I will defer to the attorneys on exactly why, but I would say that there's an opportunity here that we leave on the table if we don't adopt a local ordinance.
No, no. I'm quite comfortable with us adopting places where we have some discretion. For example, in the proposed rules with regard to the concessions and how we want to structure that. I'm referring only to things where, where if we don't do anything, as I read it, state law takes effect. Like, for example, well, state law is ineffective with regard to SEQA. We may try to interpret it here and there, but, or the Brown Act. That's just something we have to live with. The state is mandated, and we do it.
So, you know, we were just conferring. By codifying it in this way, certainly one of the advantages is that you put all of the rules in one place, which is helpful both to folks who will be utilizing the law and folks who are concerned about projects that will be approved under it and want to understand it. It may be possible, if what you're suggesting is to codify it in a different way and simply refer to the state requirements rather than repeat them, it may be possible to do that, and we could look at that, but we would sacrifice that kind of comprehensive, one-place, it's-all-there element. And as you state, it would not impact the actual requirements, and the state pieces would still be there. And, you know, we would then want to add those local pieces that would give us the ability to steer applicants in a way that, you know, the council finds more satisfactory.
I don't know whether you want motions now or not, Madam Mayor.
On item number 15, yes, we are prepared to take motions. We will be taking motions on item 16 after we have concluded item 15.
Well, I'll come back to that then, but, or maybe somebody else will. But I'm, thank you for the questions.
Thank you.
I didn't have my light on. No, I just didn't, simply didn't have it on. I have nothing to say on item number 15 at this point.
All right, then, I will entertain a motion. There are no lights.
If you want a motion, I'll make the motion.
Okay, now I have lights. Councilmember, Councilmember Niss?
Mine is. Mine is. So let me just see if I can restate all this. So what we're saying, for many of us, is that we'd like to vote no. We really want to vote no. But the frustration is that, while I drove 101 this afternoon, I would have really liked to go 75 and have it be legit, but it's not. It is a state law. I've got to drive 65, correct? That's what it said. So if I say, "But I didn't feel like that, and I brought it to my city council, and they've all agreed, I don't have to anymore," it doesn't make any difference. Am I correct? State law is going to stay the state law. So I think for me, what matters is, and I think that Ms. Lilienstein said it very well, this improves on maybe a bad situation that we're in. And at the same time, at the end of this is also, yes, you do wish to provide affordable housing. But I think all of us have become very aware, as Joe Hirsch mentioned, density is an issue right now. And this happens to be one of those items where we'd really like to just say no. And what we're hearing back from staff is, "We know you'd like to just say no, but it's not legal if you just say no." And is that close enough? Okay. And, go ahead, because you're nodding, and I...
Yes, that's correct. The city is legally obligated to follow the state density bonus law.
And to codify it, as has been put forward tonight.
Yes, that's correct.
Because I think, as Councilmember Klein said, well, then, if it's already state law, why are we doing this codification business? Really, what we're saying is the codification is also a requirement in the state law. So one must not only accept the state law, we've got to bless it at the same time. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. There are different ways to codify it, but that is correct.
Right. I'll look forward to a creative motion.
Yeah, I want to follow up on Councilmember Klein's question with a little different twist to it. It's not a matter of just, there's state law, we have to follow it. But there, what happens when the state mandate comes in conflict with our own local desires, goals? Several members of the audience raised the issue about the upzoning from 15 to 20. And they pointed out that the number of units in the South El Camino area are vastly higher than those in the downtown or the California Avenue. Now, if you look at the comp plan, if you look at the council's desires around the comp plan, I think it is quite clear that the council has repeatedly said the two areas of intense development in town are the downtown and the California Avenue area. There was a meeting in May 2010 with the PTC where we talked about the housing element and the goals and policies that should be used. And there was a series of motions that came out of that meeting, most of which said, "We should look for dense housing in mixed-use areas where there's a range of services, especially in transit-rich areas." And it's clearly identified that the downtown and the California Avenue were places where this should be done. Now, it happened, just through circumstance, when housing element came to the council in 2013. It was, gee, we're six years late, and we need to meet a deadline. Let's move it forward. And we did not have the California area plan. We did not have our discussions of downtown development cap and the zoning associated with it. So it turns out the easy plums to pick were on South El Camino and the CN zones. There was a requirement in order to meet our thing, and from the state, that we move zoning for CN from 15 to 20. Now, this was not necessarily in line with our comp plan, with our policies, with our programs, with our desires. But under the pressure of the 2007 to 14 housing element, we voted it. Now, you're asking us tonight to reaffirm the change in zoning for those 32 CN housing sites, which are primarily along South El Camino. But you're saying, "Do that because then we get streamlined update. There's an incentive in the new housing element to do it," although there's not an incentive inside our comp plan studies. So does it make sense to put a limit on the zoning change and saying, "Vote a zoning change for 12 months, as long as the existing housing element is in place," rather than make a permanent change in our zoning, which might not be in line once we get our California Avenue concept plan, once we get our downtown studies, once we have a chance to step back and say, "Gee, dense, mixed-use housing belongs in the majority in the places where it's most adaptable."
Councilmember Schmidt, I'd be happy to respond to that. I think that the change that you're suggesting, which is, if I understand it, is a, basically a sunset clause, that this increase to 20 units to the acre would not apply at these 32 sites after a certain date. Our feeling is that that is essentially what we're proposing here by saying that that increased density is only available to sites, Zone CN, that are on our housing inventory. So if we were in our next housing element update to remove some or all of these sites from the inventory, they would effectively no longer be eligible for this increase in zoning.
Now, does that mean, in order to be effective, that before we vote the new housing element, we will have a full, open discussion of the California Avenue concept plan and the downtown development plan?
We will certainly have an opportunity to discuss the status of both of those planning exercises, where they are, how they impact decisions we have to make about our inventory in the next update. As you know, staff has committed to the Regional Housing Mandate Committee regular reports and interaction. We're going to be talking on a monthly basis about the next housing element update, how to ensure maximum public participation as we zero in on any increases in sites, adding sites to the inventory for the next housing element.
Yeah, I guess I'm asking for one further step, though, a commitment, not just to talk... about the housing elements, but to talk about the contextual information, which would make it easy for the public to have a transparent discussion about where we're going and how we're getting there.
I think, I'm not sure you could have a good conversation about adding sites to the inventory without a thorough discussion of the context, both plans that are in the works, existing land uses, existing densities, and state requirements. We'll have to have that full discussion on this housing element.
So, I take it that's a commitment that we will have, the discussion?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, because I know you're trying to pin the staff down here on this. I think the intentions are to make as much progress on every planning effort that we had, have. And these area plans, of course, when completed and adopted, or these specific plans become part of the comprehensive plan. Obviously, the housing element itself is part of the comprehensive plan. And so, you could be in a situation where your decision on the housing element would be informed by plans that could be in progress or other contextual components. I would just sort of add to this also, as we move into the next housing element, you will be assigning or reassigning potentially the location for these, where the housing ought to be placed. So, I think the council's going to have a fair degree of latitude, certainly much more latitude than the incremental 64 units that we're talking about right now. It's not like we're talking about 1,000 units here.
Good. Okay, that is helpful. I think it is, usually the housing element comes at the end of the comprehensive plan discussion as a final...
We're trying to change that.
The frosting on the cake.
Councilmember Scharf.
Are our lights on? Is my light on?
My light keeps going on.
Okay, is my light on?
No.
Okay. It was, and when you asked, I verbally responded.
Well, his was on long before this, but I think you've been flipping Liz's on.
I'm here.
Okay, then, things are messed up.
This is the only one I've been, I haven't done any research.
Okay, and Liz's, Liz's just went on.
If I do this one, which one comes on?
Bert's just went on.
So, Bert's just went on?
Bert's went, just went on.
So, ours must be mixed.
No, he's doing Liz's, you're doing Bert's.
I'm sorry, we just saw we'd have a little fun tonight, but wasn't a good idea.
I'm just calling the light.
Is mine on? Because I've had it on twice before.
No, Greg's now doesn't.
Nope, now Greg's is on.
Okay.
I'm turning his light on.
So, I, so when Greg's light went on, it must have been yours. Okay.
So, when you, I have to do this verbally, because my light doesn't work. When you had asked whether there were any other speakers or questions, I verbally said, "Yes, I am," and I've been waiting.
Okay, well...
And that was at the time that you already called on Councilmember Scharf.
I did not hear that. Right, I did not hear that. That's because I keep getting Councilmember Scharf's light on, which now I'm learning is Councilmember Holman's light. So, let's go ahead with Councilmember Holman, and then I will go to Councilmember Bert. Glad we got that cleared up also. Maybe we're playing charades here tonight or something, I don't know. I do have a couple or three questions on, on number 15, and then a little historical information to provide on this as well. So, one of the questions that I have has to do with, and again, this is on item 15, is on the reasonable access, or reasonable accommodation, how everyone wants to address that. And as I read it, this seems to be lacking somewhat, because on packet page 490, in the first paragraph at the top, the next to last line there, it talks about, could be used to allow exceptions to setback, lot coverage, floor area provisions, you know, those are examples. But what it doesn't address is, this sounds to me like you could, you know, add a bathroom in the front of the house in the front setback. So, it doesn't say you can't. So, it seems to me that one could, and that could really change the character of a neighborhood. And there should be other ways, I would think, to accommodate any number of means. And then the other thing that I don't think is addressed here, having to do with this, I mean, we're all sympathetic to these kinds of situations, but we also need to be sympathetic and considerate of the neighboring properties as well and property values. So, the other thing that I don't think, to me, doesn't seem to be addressed here is, you know, how this is addressed or utilized in circumstances where you have, say, you know, a neighborhood that has CCNRs or a condo situation where there are CCNRs, or whether you have, where you have an historic building where it has specific requirements. I'm not seeing any of that addressed in these situations. So, what will be the attempt to find alternative ways of solving practical access issues?
Councilmember Holman, we do have, in the ordinance, later on, on page 13, there are review criteria for the reasonable accommodations that do give the decision-maker, in this case, the Director of Planning and Community Environment, some discretion. We're going to have to find that the proposed request meets these, these criteria in order to approve it. So, you know, I think we're going to have the latitude to work with a requister to ensure that it doesn't have significant negative consequences. I think, actually, the city has had a reasonable accommodation ordinance associated with its below-moderate units for some time, and we have rarely, ever, or maybe once or twice, had a request for accommodation. So, this is not something that a local jurisdiction would typically see, you know, a flood of requests.
I did read this, and where it's, and I appreciate the response, so, D and E, so, D says, "Whether requested accommodation would require a fundamental alteration to the city's zoning requirements, development standards, policies, procedures." It's just, it's pretty vague, and we have, you know, if you looked at packet page 491D at the bottom, and, you know, where we get into situations, here's two things. One is, CCNRs are typically considered civil issues, not city issues. So, it seems like we have a built-in conflict there of, like, how we could, you know, allow something that does or doesn't have an impact to the neighborhood, to the neighborhood's satisfaction. And when it comes to historic, we basically have not met in the way of regulations. So, I just, I'm seeing that, that area as a big gap. And then also, I don't see, and please help me if I just overlooked it, is where there's a change of ownership, how there has to be a reversal of the accommodation. And I don't, I did not find that in here either. So...
Councilmember Holman, we have not included at this point, in the ordinance, a requirement that the feature, whatever it is, that, that results from the accommodation, be removed on a change of ownership. That's something that was discussed at the Planning and Transportation Commission and could be included in the ordinance, we believe, but it is not currently addressed. And just with regard to the CCNR issue, I think we have that issue even without the reasonable accommodation ordinance. I mean, we get applications from properties for permits under our zoning regime, and we have to consider those separate and apart from the CCNRs, which are, as you say, a civil matter. So, I'm not sure that this changes the ballgame when it comes to CCNRs.
And I did read the Planning and Transportation Commission minutes around this, this matter, and it seemed like they were sort of okay with it. They didn't seem to be thrilled with the limitations or lack of limitations here. So, I'll just table that for the, for the moment. And then, having to do with the CN zoning, and 20 units to the acre, and I think Councilmember Bert's going to speak to this as well, the 20 units to the acre versus 10, 15 units to the acre. To go back a ways, and I don't think, maybe Cara was here when we did the zoning ordinance update, nobody else at the table has, was here when we did that. Were you here when we did the zoning ordinance update? Okay. So, a little history with that is that CN, or Neighborhood Commercial, since that was requested of somebody earlier, zoning was .9 to 1, and you can see that on the table on page 484. Total mixed-use floor area ratio is .9 to 1. Then you go down to footnote number four, and it says that you can get to 1 to 1 FAR. And so, that was an upzoning and for a mixed use. But at the Planning and Transportation Commission, which is where I was at that point in time, and this is where we've gotten a little off track, I think, is that the recommendation, I do believe it was the recommendation of the commission, was that to get to a 1 to 1, that additional .1 FAR had to be in retail. And we lost that somehow or other when this came forward. So, you know, I'll leave to Councilmember Bert some further conversation about the FAR for, for CN zoning. And then there was one other, pardon me, just for a moment. Oh, just, just a question, actually, just to get it on the table yet again, is, you know, when I'm looking through this and I see the, the eight-foot to 12-foot effective sidewalk widths, I'm just putting out there again, it's like I'm really looking forward to and hoping that very, very soon that comes forward to the Planning Commission and council to address that issue. So, I'm going to put those issues on the table right now. Oh, one other note that I had made for myself here, which was, again, the reasonable accommodation is, if there was a change of ownership, you know, how would that be, which I would, I would recommend, how would that be tracked in the system? And, you know, we do have a way of putting flags on property, so I would suggest that. So, I'll leave that as my comments for the moment. Councilmember Bert.
All right. So, I want to bring up something that I raised in December on commercial districts, and it really comes into play tonight. We basically have been wringing our hands around, over this issue of what can we do about having, essentially, development occur in our community at a pace more rapid and with more changes than we want, and that it's out of our control. And it's, first, I want to say that, as Mr. Baylen summarized so well, the vast majority of these changes are actually favorable to our community. But the one in this particular item 15 that I think is within our control and we have an alternative to consider is around this CN zoning. And it is, while it's true that we have to go from the 15 units per acre to the 20, we're not bound to the FAR that we have in our current zoning. And we had an upzoning from .9 to 1.0 several years ago. My memory is the same as Commissioner Holman's, that somehow there was a detail that we think was omitted from the final version, that would have been a clarifying detail, that that additional .1 FAR would only go up for the retail component. But either way, even if that wasn't the case, I am in favor of us reconsidering the FAR for both the commercial and the residential component of the CN zone. And I will also be in favor of reconsidering on the CS, and I have to reexamine the CD zone. I think it would fall into the same. So, we can stick with 20 units per acre, and what's the practical impact if we were to, say, take .1 FAR off of the commercial and .1 FAR off of the residential? It would mean that they would be smaller units that would be built. And those, as the Regional Housing Mandate Committee had identified correctly, those are the demographic changes that we have the greatest need for, small units for, for aging population and for young professionals who have not had children yet and don't need large units yet. And so, we can accomplish the objective that, and the requirement that's set forth by the A-BAG requirements, the requirement of the state law, and we simply have smaller units. Now, that doesn't necessarily reduce, well, it doesn't reduce the parking requirements for a given bedroom size. It may reduce the amount of parking and amount of auto trips generated, because there'd be fewer bedrooms, in theory. And it would have the practical impact of what we all seem to be looking for. So, my only question is whether we are comfortable tonight of moving forward with that change, and if so, I'll put it into the motion, or we think it would be better to have it vetted back through the Planning Commission in a fairly expeditious manner and move forward with the balance of the considerations tonight. So, I will await the primary motion and a sense of my colleagues, because I'm comfortable with doing it either way, either enacting it tonight or deferring it for a broader public hearing, which I would frankly be inclined to do. I think, even though I happen to think it's a good idea, and hopefully others will, I think it would be better to go through the public process.
Director Kiedelman would like to respond to your concepts.
Mayor Shepherd, Councilmember Bert, thank you. Just, we've consulted amongst ourselves here, and our feeling is that to change the FAR would be a substantive amendment, and this is something that should be vetted through the Planning and Transportation Commission. So, you would either have to adopt the ordinance without this and, and pick that up in a later cleanup, or refer the whole ordinance back to the commission.
That sounds fine. Thanks.
Councilmember Klein.
I will move on item 15, and I will, when the time comes, have a parallel motion for item 16. Continue the item for several reasons, of several purposes, I should say. One is for the staff to come up with language indicating, or that we are including the state mandated provisions but not approving them. And that's particularly the case with item number two, which, of the staff recommendations on page 471, which is the one that increases the density in the CN zone. That the staff refer to the Planning and Transportation Commission, the idea proposed by Councilmember Bert this evening to change the FAR in the CN, and I wasn't clear, Pat, but you meant the CF zone as well?
CN and CF.
CN and CF zone, okay. And that staff report back to us with these changes no later than the second meeting in And that further, when we come back to consider it, the public hearing continue to be closed unless we want to reopen it as to new information, but requiring a vote of the council to reopen the public hearing. And that's my motion.
Give a second. Okay, motion made by Councilmember Klein, seconded by Councilmember Bert. I would like to ask for a point of order, because I know that the Planning Commissioner would like, Planning Director would like to make response to your motion at this point.
Mayor Shepherd, I'd just like to clarify one thing. I think the motion referred to item number two on page 471 of the packet as, as just referring to state requirements. And that, that item number two is implementation of a commitment that was made by the city in its housing element. That's not specifically in state law. The state law includes the default density of 20 units to the acre, but there's really no provision of state law that we considerably refer to. So, it's important that that section of the ordinance remain intact, I believe, to, to accomplish the objectives that we've set forth here.
Well, I appreciate your comment that we're not just, I, I'm sorry, I have to take that back. I thought there was a provision in here that if we don't do it, it's a default provision of the state code would make it the same thing.
I believe that the default provisions in state code are in item 16, but in item 15, all of these things are, are just, are not verbatim from the state code. They're all...
Well, I was going on what you provided.
They're all state requirements, in the sense that there are laws requiring that we enact these things, but it's not the same as in item 16, where we're, we can actually just lift the language wholesale. We've actually had to create... We've actually had to create language to incorporate these things into our code. And in the instance of item number two, the requirement is in our housing element and in the way the state interprets the default density requirement in the state housing statutes.
Well, I'm talking about 15 and 16. And I got what Hillary says, but I want to delete whatever is in our code that says that we favor increasing the density in the CN zone to, from 15 to 20 units per acre. And if that means that we just have to change what we have, that's fine. And you're telling me that, as I look at this, that none of the provisions under 15 are just a rehash of what's in the state code?
That's correct. They all respond to state requirements, but they're not simple rehash like in item 16.
Fine. I still want to consider them together, so that, let me put in, amend by, revise what I stated, that we would delete the amendment of 18.16.060. And take into consideration, which I should have put in before, the comments made this evening by members of the public, particularly Mr. Baylen's thoughtful comments as to whether any other revision should be made to the items covered under item 15.
Mayor Shepherd, if I could just comment on that. I mean, of course, this is a policy matter that is entirely up to the council. I just wanted to point out that this is a commitment that the city made in its housing element. If you want to reject the idea of allowing the 20 units to the acre on these 32 parcels, we're going to, we're going to be in a problem with the state, because we're not going to be implementing our housing element.
No, no, but we do have a surplus we're operating under now with the Rena.
Councilmember Klein, we have a very small surplus, 13, approximately 13 units right now. But if we do not do the rezone, we would have to remove 64, subtract 64 units, because the upzone, those additional 64 units, were considered as part of our housing inventory sites to meet our Rena requirements.
Sure. You got it?
Yes. Are you finished speaking to your first? And do you have your motion?
I appreciate hearing from Councilmember Burt as well.
All right. Councilmember Burt.
So my understanding was, as Hillary stated, that what we have here in the 20 units per acre is because we made that commitment in our housing element. That is not a specific requirement under state law as the items in item number 16 are. And so what my proposal was, is that we do not alter that commitment, because that's baked into our housing element, and we don't have a surplus to be able to do that. But instead, that we reduce the FAR, so not the density of units per acre, but the density of development. And that that be referred back to the Planning and Transportation Commission. So Councilmember Klein may need to restate the motion. The screen's real small. We can't fix that, okay.
No, I really want staff to come back to us with advice on that, because I think the, I think, I think both are appropriate. And the reason for that is that if for some reason we can't do the FAR reduction that you're talking about, I think we want to, actually, I would like to see us do both, because I was looking for the language, but I'm quite clear that I read that if we don't do anything, the state, the default position of the state is that we have to go to 20 units per acre. Am I missing, I was looking for it again, but I made, did I make that up?
It's true that we explained in the staff report that the state has a default density that applies to the city of Palo Alto, that if you achieve 20 units to the acre, they consider those sites available for low and very low-income housing. But you still have to zone for the 20 units to the acre. That's why we're taking this action. The state looked at our sites, and they said, those won't cut it unless you get to the 20 units to the acre.
That's my problem. The idea that the, that some people, some bureaucrats in Sacramento, our superplanning commission, to me, is repulsive. And I'm just not willing to go along with that.
Councilmember Klein, I actually, I reread your motion, and I think if, and it's just disappeared, but I think it is broad enough that it doesn't stipulate that those changes Sorry, we've lost it on the screen. But I think it'll pop up.
Well, yeah, that's one of the reasons I wanted to continue rather than having this discussion.
Right. And so I reread it, and I think it, if, even if it did have an incorrect assumption that's broad enough, that it doesn't direct staff to do something that is incorrect.
Good. And we'll leave it as it is?
Oh, and may I add one other item? It says CN and CF zones, but it should have been CN and CS, as in SAM, but also should include CC. And I, that was not in the original motion, but I've double-checked. Is that acceptable?
I was incorporating it from you.
That's fine. Great. So I already, I'll just, speaking of my second, I'll just say, I've already spoken to it. Councilmember Klein has captured it, in essence, and I look forward to this reexamination.
May I speak to the motion?
No, I just...
Councilmember Klein, go ahead and speak to your motion, then we'll go to the city manager and the city attorney.
Yeah, I just want to add one or two other things that, one is, with all due respect to the city attorney's office, I just can't believe that we have a legal system in California where the state legislature can say that a city council has to vote for a particular item. And that just doesn't make any sense. We're not a group of rubber stamps. The, the other thing is that, that I want to mention, that I should have, this isn't part of the motion, but I think we want to pass this on when we get through with this to our state legislators, saying this is another example of why this whole process of approval of housing elements, Rena allocations and so forth, has become a bureaucratic nightmare and really does not reflect good government. And that we know that there's movements in Sacramento to change it, and if we can add a little bit along those lines, I think we'd be doing some good for the state.
City manager.
Thank you. I just wanted to add a, well, a comment related to the directive to be able to come back by the second meeting in February. And I, I'm not sure how I read the motion. The first part is that we come up with language. The second is we refer to the PTC, and then we come back to report on the changes. I don't know if that's one presuming that the PTC has completed its work by that meeting in February. And then just secondly, I would say, the second meeting in February is February 10th. The items that are already on the agenda are voluminous and complicated. Many items relating to parking, relating to TDM, relating to the community outreach conversation, relating to the golf course, EI, I mean, February 3rd and February 10th are much more involved and complicated, more complicated meetings than tonight's meeting is. So I'm just, I think we have to be careful about targeting a particular date, although Hillary, I know, is, wants to get this done also. So we, I guess we'd rather not have a specific date, but direct us to come back as soon as possible and let us work with how we can best configure this if this motion passes.
Thank you. We just had a clarifying question about the motion. Did you want, does the motion intend that the PTC look at the FAR in the CN, CC, and CS zones citywide, or just on the, in the housing inventory sites that are zoned with those designations? The, this ordinance, of course, only applies to the housing inventory sites.
Sure.
Councilmember Burt.
As I think about it, because of the time constraints, I would be comfortable with the PTC to break it up, and for the first phase, to only examine and recommend FARs for the housing inventory sites. And then subsequent to that, after we've evaluated, to look at FARs for these zones elsewhere in the city. But, so it would be two phases, and that would help allow this to come back in a more expedited fashion, and, and more time to consider what's appropriate elsewhere.
That's okay with me. May I respond to the city? What date do you have, would you suggest on, Jim?
Well, I hate to say it, I mean, I'd feel more comfortable if we could regroup tomorrow and look at the whole calendar and that sort of thing, and then send some suggested dates to the council in some way.
Well, as you know, I'm always interested in moving things along, and this one, we're told, we got to move fast, because we have a January 15 deadline. So...
Yeah, I just know that you'll be upset about the other things that get pushed off also.
Well, I would note that there's nothing in our procedures that says we can't have two meetings in a week.
Well, but it, it takes a long, believe it or not, as I've often said, Gandhi said it takes a lot of money to let me live in such poverty. It takes a long time for us to get ready for a meeting, actually, also. Well, yeah, I mean, Hillary clearly wants to do this. I just want us to be able to report on how we have to rearrange the different items on the agenda, and hopefully that would, the council be satisfied with that.
Councilmember Klein, what if you were to change the motion by the end of February or...
Yes, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
And while I have the microphone, Councilmember Schmidt found the language I was looking for, which is on page 472, where it says, "For Palo Alto, the law includes a default, the law includes a default density of 20 units per acre, per government code section, et cetera, et cetera."
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. May I add one small technical point? So on the public hearing issue, I understand the council's intention to expedite to the extent possible, but if we could add the phrase, if it would be acceptable, that the public hearing will remain closed unless decided to open the public hearing or as otherwise required by law. Frankly, if you make substantive changes, you will need to take additional public comment on those items.
Councilmember Price?
Yes, yes. I have a question, based on the motion we have before us. And when I first read item number 15, I was sufficiently persuaded that the consequences of not moving along in the direction as originally proposed were not good, and not making eligible for streamlining and that kind of thing. So my only hesitation with this is, are we going to end up with a product, I'm just focusing on 15, that is something that is going to allow us to do what we've committed to do in the certified housing element that we're currently operating under? And it gets kind of an open question, but with the changes that we were asking you to examine, you are feeling compelled to do that and come back to us. Is there sufficient time to do all of these things that we're asking you to look at so that we are still eligible for streamline review and the other things that you so well articulated in the original staff report?
Well, thank you, Councilmember Price. Jim has been very good propping me up here as I started hyperventilating about the schedule. We did try and communicate in the staff report some sense of urgency. There is, albeit, no hard and fast deadline here to get these two ordinances adopted. But I would say the requirement is that we do it soon. The staff is working right now to tee up the next housing element update. That is going to get harder and harder if we don't have these ordinances adopted, and very clear understanding that we qualify for the streamlined review. Just to expand on that a little, there were some comments from the public in the last week or so suggesting that my staff and I are advocating for the streamlined review, because it'll make us look good and the planners want to be efficient and the like. It's really about resources. If we can't qualify for that review, we are very, even with the streamlined review, we are going to be very challenged to meet the deadline. And if we do not meet the deadline, we're going to be faced with doing these updates every four years instead of every eight years, and we're going to expose the city to additional costs and risks. So we really want to get that streamlined review. I am fearful that an extended referral back to commission and then back to council will begin to compromise our ability to achieve that objective.
And that's my, precisely my concern, but I'm looking here in the way this discussion is going, and I guess you were very clear in the implications early on in the staff report. So I am trying to figure out, sort of thinking out now just very quickly, is perhaps elements of what we're discussing here, even the FAR discussion and other issues, would, it might be a better effort to really focus on the next, the next round. I feel like we're trying to do quite a bit here to try to address the concerns that you've raised, but sort of seeing the way things are moving, I just, I'm just concerned about your ability to do all the things we've asked of you right now. And that's, and that's just direct observation and concern about what I'm hearing and the body language I'm seeing and all of that. So I wanted to state that.
Councilmember Price and Mayor, if I could just add to that, going back to Councilmember Schmidt's comment a while ago about some specific plans that have been in the works for five, six, seven years, whatever, and getting the context for those as we deal with the housing element next time around. I mean, we have the whole comp plan to be launching into to deal with the transportation and the land use and the community services and, I mean, all of these other elements. And, I mean, the whole point of the comp plans is not to deconstruct everything into an individual component as if it stands on its own. It has to be integrated and connected to these other pieces. And so Hillary and her staff are actually frantically working on preparing some proposals to me about how to add more capacity to even support all of those different pieces. So we are going to be in a hard spot to be able to connect transportation and land use and housing and all of these things together in the timeframe that we have, if we don't have a way to be able to move through some of these things and understand that, you know, every time we do push something off, it, I mean, it has a, it has a kind of domino effect on the other work that we need to do. So we understand the motion. We have an interest in seeing this move ahead. I just need to know, every time we can't do something, it does back everything up. And to be honest with you, I would hope the public, when they're criticizing us about this, understands this is part of, a part of our thorough public process that we have here, and not some design by us not to act on things. Thanks.
Councilmember Scharf.
It's me. No, it's me. This time, it's really me. This time, it's actually me. So I have some real concerns about where this is going, and I think I need to get some clarification from our planning director. First of all, if we do not get the streamlining on the housing element, it seems like we're in trouble as a city. And I think we need to recognize that, that it would be irresponsible as a council to blow that. It would be lack of governance. It would be a horrible thing to do. And if we don't recognize that as a council, I think we're abdigating our responsibilities. So I guess I need to know if we won't, if this will stop us from getting that, and I fear it will. It seems to me that we're talking about, that we need to qualify for that update, we need to pass these items, and if we don't, we won't qualify. And I guess that's the question on the table. And if I can see the motion a little smaller, so I can actually see it. Shrink it down. There we go.
Councilmember Scharf, to respond to you, we do need to take these two actions to qualify for the streamlined review. But I have to be honest, there is no hard and fast deadline. It's amazing to me that the state bureaucrats haven't said, thou must do this by... It's amazing to me that the state bureaucrats haven't said, thou must do this by, you know, February 10th. They haven't given us a date, but we have to do it soon so that we can launch the next housing element update. My fear is that if we refer to PTC and then back to council, that soon will have disappeared and we will miss our opportunity for this streamlined review.
That's sort of where it seems to me. Can we just leave it the way it was? I could actually read it. Can we put it down the way it was?
Yeah.
Thanks. So, the first thing, if we're going to continue this, for staff to come up with language including state mandated provisions but not approving them, frankly, that makes absolutely no sense as far as I can tell in this context. My understanding of this works is that we were on the phone with HCD and the housing advocates at the time and that we agreed as a city in our housing element to do this. And if we don't go ahead and do this, we're then violating what we said we'd do in our housing element. And that it's actually, and I know that Councilmember Klein can point to the staff report and maybe the staff report is, gives the wrong inference, but I don't think there's a default provision that then happens. So, I don't see how we can come up with staff. It makes no sense. So, if I'm wrong, tell me. But it didn't strike me that staff can come up with language where we refer to state mandated provisions where we don't actually do this. I mean, is there a way to do that or is this just a useless exercise?
I think Councilmember Scharf, you're correct and I apologize. It may have been that we were misleading when referring to, quote, "default densities", but that's what the state refers to and they require that you zone to those densities to demonstrate that you have sites that are available for low and very low income households.
So, my next question is, let's say we approve this tonight, could we also then refer to the Planning and Transportation Commission to change the FAR? I mean, is there any reason why that has to happen first? I mean, I'm completely with Councilmember Burt here and I think it's a great suggestion and I think we should do it, but I don't see why we have to have that order. It seems to me that we should approve this tonight, then refer to the Planning and Transportation to change the FAR in the CN, CC, and CS zones for the housing inventory sites. The other thing that bothers me about this motion frankly, is if we're sending something to PTC, are we really seriously thinking we're not going to take public comment on it? We're going to close the public hearing? That seems completely not transparent and inappropriate. I'm frankly offended by it. I mean, I think on something like this, we need to have the public come in and be able to speak to us pro and con on virtually, and something that we would send to the Planning and Transportation Commission? We would actually have the idea that we're going to close public comment? It makes absolutely no sense to me. So, I don't know if there's any response to that. I mean, it would seem we'd have to do it anyway.
I'm sure you'll end up doing it.
Yes, you will. You will take public comment at PTC and here.
So, I guess I'm going to make a substitute motion. We'll see if anyone agrees with it. I move that we approve the staff recommendation as it is tonight, but we go ahead, and I guess I now have to look back. I wanted to then include, then we refer to the Planning and Transportation Commission and I want to use Councilmember Burt's language, it's disappeared, so I can't see it again. So.
I'm in agreement with you. I'll even second it.
So, that's what I'd like to do and I'd like to take out the part that says that we're not going, we're not, we're going to close the public hearing.
And I'll second your motion. Or you maybe get a third?
I think Councilmember Burt's.
Okay, Councilmember Scharf has made a motion and Councilmember Burt has already agreed to second the motion and so we'll hold it there.
I don't think you can do two seconds at once ever. Are you withdrawing your second pet from the first motion?
No, I just, no. They said you three months. It's improper, let her.
No, I don't, it's not, we've done this before Liz, so it's okay.
Never bad.
So, the motion is to approve the staff recommendation that's set forth. It's set forth in item number 15. There's a whole bunch of stuff there. It's like, you know, one through five. And then it's to go to number two, which Pat had referred off to CN zone, and that would be the motion. Do you wish to speak to your second?
Just briefly, the only thing I cared about the motion was the substantive change on the zoning. I was concerned about why this hearing would be closed and the other stuff isn't really my battle.
Thank you, Councilmember Berman.
At this point, I'm trying to decide how much to say. I, I agree pretty much with everything that Councilmember Scharf said. I was worried that we were, frankly, I think we might have been misinterpreting the statute and what we were trying to do here. From what I can tell, that default language only applies to whether or not we want those parcels to qualify for affordable housing. So, we can not do it. It just means that we have to find more houses to qualify for affordable housing. It means we have to find more units to put on our, our housing element and it means that we're not going to qualify for the expedited review. So, we don't have to do any of those things. It would be bad and, and would, would put us back, you know, our, our housing element that we just approved would be totally null and void and, and all sorts of other ramifications. So, I think, I like the idea of analyzing whether or not to reduce the FAR. I think that should go to Planning and Transportation Commission for them to take first crack. I, I think it makes sense to approve this at this stage. We're going to have another robust conversation with item number 16 about, about, you know, different consequences that might occur, but I think, you know, this makes sense and I think we can improve the situation per Councilmember Burt's suggestion and Councilmember Scharf's motion by kind of having a reanalysis of the FAR and some of these zoning designations. So, I plan on supporting the substitute motion.
Okay, now I have all lights on again, so let's go through them. Councilmember Holman, and I want to just remind everybody, it's past 10:30 and we have one more item to take up tonight.
I just want to also go on record as saying this is a bad state law. I know everyone else has done that, but I want to jump on the bandwagon and plan on talking with our state reps about it.
Okay, this is, and is it clear in the motion that this is only referring to item number 15?
Yes, this is item number 15.
Okay, because the prior motion was referring to this item, but it was really for two items. So, I believe the intention is to, if we want to do something expeditiously, to look at, and this just says change in the FAR, it doesn't say reducing the FAR. I think the intention is to reduce the FAR, if that would be an amendment that you would consider just for clarification.
Yep, sure.
And if we want to do this expeditiously and the places that this applies, this upzoning of 20 units to acre rather than 15 is in the CN zone. So, if we could take out CC and CS, we will get a more expeditious response from Planning Commission and public output. If that would also be an amendment considered by the maker and seconder? I'm not saying that the others wouldn't be, wouldn't be of interest, but right now, what we're concerned with is CN because that's where the upzoning's happening.
Okay, I'm good with it.
Okay. So, we'll take those off. And I have, I have a problem with, I checked with city attorney and this wouldn't be spot zoning to look at only the CN zone properties on the housing inventory list, but I do have a concern about not taking a comprehensive look at CN zone. It seems to me if you have, you know, 11 of the, I'm just making up a number here because I didn't look at the, the list of.
You will, it's not now.
Yeah, it's still, I think it's better to look at them all at once and you're dealing with some of the same property owners probably and such. I'd rather just look at the CN zone as a whole and staff can respond back to us about if it would take longer or not to look at the CN zone as a whole as opposed to just these particular sites. The other thing that I would like to add to this, this motion is reducing the FAR and also have PTC consider the retail component, retail proportion of the non-residential.
As part of the referral?
Yes.
To PTC?
Yes.
So, let's, but let's stop for just one second. First of all, I think, Richard, the motion actually should say the FR and the CN zone for the housing, sites identified on the housing inventory.
Well, that's part of my, that's part of my question, yeah.
That's what it should say. And then you want, now then, let's add the retail part and should look at, what was your language on that?
And should consider retail proportion.
Of the FAR.
Yes, I'm waiting for you to catch up. Retail proportion of the FAR, including ground floor retail requirements. Remembering, of course, not in the motion, but remembering, of course, this is CN neighborhood commercial zone, so that's why the ground floor retail.
Including ground floor, it's just a retail portion of it. It's a little, it's okay.
Okay. And so, where are the maker and seconder of the motion with CN zone and not just the inventory sites?
So, I just want the inventory sites.
Is that what you?
I also.
Okay, all right, well, we'll leave it at that then.
We'll accept this.
So, I'm, I'm pretty good with that. I still have some concerns about the reasonable accommodation, but we'll leave it to staff to prove me wrong. So, with that, I'll be supporting the motion. Thank you. And when you're ready, I'll make a motion for number 16.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, I'm going to support the original motion. I think tonight's meeting was very helpful and interesting. There were a number of public comments and questions that were brought up that were important and I think it is useful for staff to go through and redo the staff report, taking into account the questions and, and dealing with them as, as you have done to many, but it would be good to have a final report that reflects the questions asked and, and your responses to them. So, in that spirit, I will support the original motion.
Councilmember Klein.
Two very short items. One, the original motion does not include a referral to the Planning and Transportation Commission with what brought it right back to council in order to try to keep things expedited, which was the same idea of not reopening the public hearing, which I hear people not liking. That's fine. I would only remind them that history says that's the way we usually do it. It's nothing new and we can always reopen if we want to. Third and last, I would point out that this may not be such a problem on item 15, but in the language on item 16, if you look through what the handout from Hillary, if we do the same thing on item 16 that I think we're about to do on 15, you in effect are endorsing the whole concession system that the, the state has set, set up and I would hope that you, we find a way so that council members are not on record as supporting the state's system of concessions, which seems to me to be, been a very bad idea and I don't like the idea that our, our city should be supporting it.
Councilmember Niss, our vice mayor Niss.
I am persuaded by Councilmember Scharf's comments and also because I sat through pre-council this morning and know that we have at least, I'd say 10 items in, in front of us that we need to get done within the next two months. And I am sympathetic. We got really jammed at the end of the year last year and I know this, every attempt being made to try and accomplish this in a rational amount of time. It is very tempting to go along with Councilmember Klein's motion. It is tempting to just say no, but you have convinced us, five of you, that just saying no puts us in a really bad spot as far as our housing element goes and as far as our streamlining process goes. So, as, as much as I'd like to just say no, instead, I'm going to say yes to Councilmember Scharf's motion.
Well, I'd like to just make a couple comments. First off, Director Gilman, you really did a wonderful job this evening explaining not just all of this, but then incorporating the questions that came out, not just tonight, but from the community in general last week as well. I think that, quite frankly, I'm very grateful that the community is following this, as you know. I have found it to be quite frustrating to wash, watch the twisting in the wind that Menlo Park went through last year when they did fall out of compliance. And the sticks came out and the, along with the judgment that came out with the judge that ordered them to comply and to mix their, and to bundle their numbers together and to basically order the zoning and in a very quick, very fast speed. And so, as much as I can, I very much object to these types of mandates coming down from the state, I am certainly insecure with, with putting us in any more peril to be sued or, or held accountable by these agencies that want to insist that we, you know, that are willing and ready and able to come right after us to make sure that we have an experience that is, I think, very devastating for Palo Alto, which is having to double up units, order somebody else to come in and do the zoning for you for your housing. I think that that is the, the most tragic thing that could ever happen to a city. I also am, so I will be supporting the substitute motion, but these are the reasons why. One, you've given us this concept of a sunset and we are going right back into the housing element right now in order to get the new housing element done. So, that means that we don't even have a year on this if, if it seems appropriate to make changes to these particular sites and units. Two, I very much appreciate the astuteness that's coming out of our former planning commissioners, Councilmember Burt and Councilmember Holman, on helping guide us with being able to send back the FAR and that type of thing. I think that that really is called for in being able to hear and listen to the community right now with the angst over the density that's going on. So, I will be supporting this secondary motion. And then also, I am more than troubled, and we have already started these conversations with both Jerry Hill and Rich Gordon, on trying to get some, some relief from these types of mandates that come in like a, like an elephant foot. They're not as severe as I think some of the troubles we were under if we'd had high-speed rail coming through with all of the project builds that they wanted to do around that and all the visioning that the state had on that level. But on the other hand, this clearly is in violation of everybody's core democratic value that we should be able to envision our own future. And so, I will be supporting this motion and there, and without going back out for another round, I'd like to go to the board and vote on this.
This on the substitute, right?
On the, on the secondary motion, yes. Well, they call it secondary in our policies.
I'll vote for both.
Yeah, we're voting. So, that measure carries with Councilmember Klein and Councilmember Schmidt voting against it. And I want to do a check in. We have already taken up item number 15. It is a few minutes before 11. I mean, excuse me, item number 16, which is our density bonus law. And so, I'd like to make sure that everybody is good with continuing this, all right. And Councilmember Holman, you took this through our Regional Housing Allocation Committee, so would you mind kicking this off for us?
We've already had a fair amount of discussion on this, so I'm actually going to make just a couple of comments and then move right into a motion. I appreciate, I mean, we're always, we're always better for public participation. I really appreciate the questions that came up by, by the community and the answers provided by, by staff, particularly Hillary Gilman. So, thank you for that. What isn't necessarily clear to people is that without passing this ordinance, we have a much more open-ended accessibility to zoning concessions by applicants. For instance, and this happened at one of the, one of the projects that's taken advantage of this is, what's a, what's a setback concession? Is the setback, one setback, two setbacks, three setbacks? And that's, that's the conundrum we're under without having an ordinance like this that implements, you know, whether it's a front setback, side setback, or rear setback. That's why this ordinance is important. It really does quantify and push back against state mandates where we'd all rather have local control. We just don't have it right now. And Mayor Shepherd is correct, we have started this discussion and had been, have had conversations with, with, with state legislators, Hill and, and Gordon about this. So, with that, I'm going to move the staff recommendation, but with that recommendation, I'm also going to delete section 1815050F.
Yes, I'll second that if you'd like to second.
Okay.
And do you want the second on the sequel?
I'm sorry?
You just add, right?
Just add. Just F. Which one is the sequel one?
I don't remember that one.
I don't remember a section of sequel in, in here.
It's okay, don't worry about it.
Okay. Councilmember Holman has made the motion, the staff recommendation with the elimination of the.
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent low market rate units, and it's been seconded by Vice Mayor Niss.
So to speak to the, so to speak to the motion, 050F, that's parentheses lowercase f. So again, going back to the zoning ordinance update, some years ago, there was a discussion at Planning Commission about coming up with a particular zoning that would help accommodate affordable housing projects. This is not the way to do it. This is, again, the reason that we have to have this ordinance. This is just way too open-ended, and I really do appreciate the, the community bringing this, this issue forward. So I think there is a way that we could look forward to having a controlled process, a measured process, and development standards for affordable housing projects that makes sense. Again, this is not the way to do it. So I think with that, that's about all I need to say about this motion. Except that I, I do think it's important to say, the Regional Housing Mandate Committee, which was then Mayor Sharp, Councilmembers Berman and, and Schmidt, along with members of the two representatives from the school district, and the representative from the Planning and Transportation Commission, I think, came up with very measured and detailed and quantified recommendations. We eliminated, for instance, you know, the front setback concession. We eliminated a number of things I think the community should be happy about, and maybe we need to do a better job at advertising what we did do to push back and help improve the process here, and add to the constraints that the state is trying to impose on us. So I think we did a good job not to pat ourselves on the back. It's not what we want to be doing, but I think we did do a good job in trying to measure and quantify what is being imposed upon us. So thank you to colleagues.
Vice Mayor Niss, would you like to speak to your second?
And I would, and I would agree with what Councilmember Holman said very well. But I'd like to add one thing. I, I really appreciate hearing from the member who was on that committee with that recommendation, because it's very clear, I think, in the report, but it's also very good to hear from that, from those of you who actually sat there and worked this through. And it, I, I would agree. So thanks.
Councilmember Price.
Yes, I will be supporting this, but I did want to make the, the statement that I hope that as we continue to move forward on the whole issue of affordable housing, that we are very mindful of the need for very low and low-income household housing, and that we look at other alternatives that make it feasible and economically viable to do so. We've had recent experience where affordable senior housing didn't happen, and the need has not gone away, and it will increase. And so I think we do need to revisit that, and I look forward on the housing committee being able to do that.
Councilmember Burt.
Yes, just one thing I want to clarify for the record. Does staff know the portion of our affordable housing projects that are planned community zone? My, my recollection is the vast majority of those units are PCs, is that correct?
Yeah. It was in the report that came as well.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, so I just wanted, Bob Moss made an incredible statement. He said that we've never, I don't know if this is the precise wording, required low-income projects to have concessions, except for every low-income PC that we have throughout the community has all had significant concessions. So it's just, I want to get on the record, that is the most ludicrous statement I've heard this month. Thank you.
Councilmember Sharp.
So yeah, I fully support, I fully support the motion, and I'm really glad we're taking out 18.15050. I don't know, me and Councilmember Holman were talking about this earlier, I think both of us were a little surprised to see that, that there. The other thing I, when I was going through this, it's, it's funny when you're on the committee, I realized as we went through this, we changed everything from 50% to 25%. As we went through it, we had long discussions about it. The only one we didn't change from 50 to 25 was an increase in the floor area ratio up to 50% or more of the square footage. And I think we should do that. I think it still provides a strong incentive, one of the better incentives. And I guess I'm not sure why it needs to be that generous, frankly. So I'm going to move that we decrease that one to 25% as well and be consistent with the rest of them. That's number, it's number four? Yeah, it's the FAR. It's an increase in the floor ratio up to 50% or up to the square footage. I would just say up to 25. I'm on page 11 of my, packet page 522.
So we just made this provision.
I am asking as a friendly amendment.
Okay, so I have a question then for staff. I think the reason that this maybe didn't get reduced, and I'm not saying no yet, but I think the reason this didn't get reduced is because it is not going to probably amount to much. In mixed use, it really wouldn't amount to much. So would 25% be really anything? But where it might amount to a fair amount is if it was an all affordable housing project, an all housing project. So I need a little guidance from staff on, on the consideration that Councilmember Schmidt, or, excuse me, Sharp has put forward.
Councilmember Holman, you know, I'm, I'm trying to recollect the conversation at the committee. I, I don't remember why the committee didn't reduce this to 25% as well. I think this is a meaningful concession at 50%, and it's still meaningful at 25%.
With that guidance, I'll accept the amendment to 25%.
So it's decrease FAR to 25, oh, increase FAR, it is.
Increase.
Right, it's got it, you got it. Okay. Hey, pass me some water.
Yes, sir. I pulled the glass up out of the water.
Yes, the staff have the, city clerk have that yet, it's decrease FAR incentive to
So you've accepted that into the motion?
Yes.
Councilmember Berman.
So I don't know if I was clear earlier, so I just want to go back on the record and clarify that this is a bad state law, but that we're doing everything we can to make it better. And we spoke about this ad nauseam in the Regional Housing Mandate Committee, which I really enjoy those meetings also, especially in regards to this item, and I think we've come up with a better one. One question, it's not, it's more of a comment, I suppose, because, because I'm not going to follow my sword about it, and I think it's probably just fine the way the motion reads, but I, I thought, what I, 50% seemed high to me also. I thought we might have said 35%, because that's the, the density bonus that you could get, and that might have correlated with the FAR increase from those units. But I think 20, given that we're talking about mixed use, 25% was probably enough to cover whatever the increase of the housing units is anyhow, so I think that's just fine and, and a good catch. I also wanted to second Councilmember Price's comments, though, that, you know, building affordable housing in Palo Alto is remarkably difficult. And, and Councilmember Burt made a good point that most of the affordable housing units that have been built were under PCs, and clearly PCs are a little bit toxic at the moment. So, you know, we, we do need to, I think, have a side effort to, to identify ways that aren't as vague as, as 18.15.050F were, but, you know, try to identify a different path forward for how we could build affordable housing in our, in our community and get everybody on board with that. So I'm happy to see F be removed from this, but I want to make sure that idea of, of making affordable, developing affordable housing more possible in Palo Alto, that we don't lose sight of that. So other than that, I'll be supporting the motion.
Councilmember Klein.
For much the same reasons I had on item 15, I'll be voting no on this. I want to add just a few comments to, to that. What really bothers me on 16 is that we are implicitly endorsing the concession system that the state has set up. And I really appreciate the work that the committees have done to somewhat rationalize the consent, the concessions, and I think we've improved them. But we've improved something that's a bad idea. And one of its problems, among many, I think, is that we're creating, or the state, I should say, has created for us, a system that's beginning to rival the Internal Revenue Code and complexity, which means that the developers have the advantage and our ordinary citizens don't understand what's really going on, because it's just really something that they only may encounter once in their neighborhood, and then they try to reason through all the complexities, and it just doesn't work very well. So that our city is implicitly going along with it bothers me a lot. I'm glad that we did take out section 50, F on the bottom of page 11. So Councilmember Holman and Vice Mayor Niss, thank you for not even including that in the motion. I don't, don't think that was a, a good idea. Lastly, I'm concerned that, two things. One, I also regret that we have not continued this to take into account some of the excellent comments that our citizens made, and I think that they were thoughtful comments and that they're now being just swept under the rug. And I think that's happening a lot because of the timing. I think I understand why that's a persuasive argument, but we're going, as Vice Mayor Niss pointed out, we have a lot of things, but, coming up in the next few months. But if we're going to treat everything in this way, that is to say, oh, we're just going to pass it, we're not going to give it the thought it deserves, just because we have too big, an agenda, we're going to get in trouble. I think we, this has to be talked about at, at our retreat in, in a couple of weeks, but I think we're just going to have to find more time. For example, looking at it in retrospect, I would have us have a meeting next week, not to say, okay, we're going to make up for that by having a meeting on the fourth Monday. I just don't see where we're going to have a lot of time off, if you will, if we're going to really do the job that we should on the great number of items that we have coming before us. And I think that's just going to take a lot of work, and it's not going to work if we're going to say, oh, we just don't have the time, so we ought to have to pass it.
Okay, well, thank you, colleagues, for this, and thank you for the motion on this. And I think the work in the Regional Housing Allocation Committee is starting to pay off. It, it seemed to take a while for that group to socialize, and the school district members, I guess, to really understand that they were at the table and working on things that they have to deal with from their end, when we do have an escalation in student population from residential housing that does come in here. I think that they should be here at the table and understand some of the perils that we're involved with as we have to make policy. My biggest problem with the density bonus law, and I, unlike, unlike some of the comments that have been made here tonight, we did have this come before us, what, about three months ago? And then we referred it to commission. And even then, they missed item F here. It was the community that brought that one forward. Hillary's watchful eye of being able to say, we don't need it. This is the way things should work in Palo Alto with all these eyes on here. At the same time, I was concerned even back then of not having this codified so that we could have our preferences, preferences out there, because this is the law. We already have projects that have been developed that have taken on some of the preferences that we're now directing them not to. And so this is much wiser to put into our code than it is to leave out of. My major problem with density bonus is that the BMR units are only there for 30 years, and we're seeing them roll out of their 30 years over the Terman Apartments over there next to Terman Middle School. And then they go to market, and that is a big cash cow for a developer to have after 30 years, which is one of the things that I am intrigued by with the limited ability to put some of the planned community zoning in. We are able to capture that for the entire life of the project, or until, of course, city council, a future city council 100 years from now were to remove that requirement to have the low-market rents. I also think that the city could be, could use an opportunity to have the conversation about whether or not we can work with our state legislatures to see if there's a way we could capture this for teachers and first responders in our own staffing, because we know that those people are pushed out farther and farther. So there are some other opportunities that we can start to take up, but we will be pursuing, you know, this housing element once again, and we will be taking a look at strategically placing the housing where we want it to go as we move forward with a comprehensive plan, and I think that that is a wise thing for this council to do. So with that, with no more lights, let's vote on the board.
Voted.
Oh, okay. And this measure passes with Councilmember Klein voting against it. And that concludes the meeting for tonight, and this meeting is adjourned.